Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors to order. Today is Thursday, November 6, 2014. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street here in our very own Carson City. Alan, can we have a roll call for the record, please?
Supervisor About. Supervisor Monkowski. Supervisor McKenna. Supervisor Shirk. Mayor Kroll. You have a quorum present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is Dixie Jennings Teetz here this morning? I don't see her. Why don't we all stand and I'll have a thought of the day and we'll just kind of give some quiet reflection. The thought of the day is from Will Rogers and it reads, "The worst thing that happens to you may be the best thing for you if you don't let it get the best of you." Will Rogers. Certainly, no, but we could probably contemplate that.
You might want to mention Pete.
And we'll have a moment in silence for a good friend of ours who has departed, Pete. Thank you very much. City Manager, would you lead us in the pledge this morning, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, we're now on item number five. This is time for public comment. Invited to comment and discuss any topic as relevant to or within the authority of the Board of Supervisors. I know there's some folks who want to comment and some who -- I just know that there are some. So why don't we just get started? Public comments in order. Good morning.
Morning, Mayor, Supervisors. Bruce Kiddis, Carson City. I'll try to be coherent.
Sure, I'm coherent.
A few comments on commercial developers. Carrington Company, great job. It is very exciting to see them reinvesting what they've done to McDonald's. Nice story about the furniture store. Nice story about Tahoe Ridge coming. Details later. Very professional developer. Steve Neighbors and the Adams Trust, rocky start. Wonderful job. The Adams Hub, beautiful renovation inside and out. Fine young man, executive director. I thought it was brilliant that they involved the public when they didn't have to on naming the hub, on the bank building. They're doing an excellent job. Nice story about the brewery. Which brings us to the Carson City Development Company. It was amusing for a couple of days about who said the Hyatt Hotel. Who said it first? That was amusing. Until I read Mr. Barrett's article on Friday that a developer said, the prospective developer, said that Supervisor Shirk and candidate Hilgit may be jeopardizing his property or the project. Now, that's nonsense. And my point is, you know, I don't know if he leaked the story. If his website, which is an amateur website, it says, "Our Developments." It's got two prospective developments in Carson City with a picture of the Hyatt in Maybe he's setting them up. Does he want compensation because our supervisor said Hyatt? The point is, N-N-D-A is involved with it. Find a professional developer and let's not go through a couple of years with an amateur. And that's what he is. I've never met the man, but I don't like him and I don't like him getting involved in our local politics and suggesting that Supervisor is -- has done something wrong. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Bruce Diley and this is two public safety issues, so keep it very brief, about three minutes. I handed this out. What it's regarding is the proposed reintroduction of the Grizzlies into the Cascades. And as it relates to Carson City as a public safety issue just in regards to the U.S. Forest Service and the National Park Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and the Department of the Interior, they all distribute and recommend bear spray for bear attacks in the pamphlet called Be Bear Aware. And I've got a copy here. The problem with this is, is that my friend and I were attacked by a bear up in Alaska in 1996 and the bear spray didn't stop the bear. And I learned from the encounter, there was a big story in the Anchorage Daily News about it. And they basically, the tone of the article is that we were lucky to be alive for relying on pepper spray, or bear spray. And yet here, all over the country, these are being distributed telling people to use bear spray for bear attacks. And I know it's not enough to stop the bear because I sprayed the bear and it charged and knocked me down. It was growling and snarling in my face and waving its paw at my head. And so it could have killed us if it wanted to and the pepper spray didn't stop it. As this relates to the other public safety issue is that the person I was with, he was a missionary, Keith Benner, and he was studying in a theological seminary school. Ten years after we were attacked by the bear, he took his own life and committed suicide. I wondered if it wasn't religious absolutism, you know, maybe perfectionism, that maybe he had false guilt and that's why he took his own life. So I applied that to Alcoholics Anonymous. And just on a personal basis, I know that AA can be very helpful, but I also know that it can be harmful as far as false guilt from religious absolutism. And I also know that it's court ordered for people to be, they have to attend AA meetings by the courts. And so I think that this is something that should be brought to the attention of both the courts that are sending people there. And I don't think it should be court ordered, but I think the important thing is that people are aware. And I'll just say this, I'm kind of out of breath.
Don't worry about it. You got a justice court just listening to you, so.
Oh, good.
I know what you're talking about, drug court, and I'm sure he knows as well, so.
Okay. Now, I'll just conclude with this part is that AA states that it's a spiritual program and not religious. But here, I'll just quote very quickly to show that its own literature depicts a religious context. And I think people need to be aware of this. It says it in its AA Comes of Age. It includes a quote, "Under these conditions, the patient turns to religion with an entire willingness and readily accepts without reservation a simple religious proposal, considering the presence of the religious factor. Because of this initial confidence, identical experience, and the fact that discussion is pitched on moral and religious grounds, it is paramount to note that the religious factor is all important even from the beginning. Alcoholics Anonymous, the name applied to a group of ex-alcoholics who, through a therapeutic program with a definite religious element, found an answer to his drinking problem in a personal religious experience. Harry Emerson Fosdick's favorable review of AA's big book in 1939 states, the core of their whole procedure is religious. Fosdick in 1956 wrote, 'Moreover, these testimonies bear witness to religion's reality, for Alcoholics Anonymous is deeply religious.'" Again, that's AA Comes of Age, pages 304 to 324. And that's AA Conference-approved literature. So when AA is telling people, when they show up by the courts, it's saying, "We're spiritual, we're not religious," its own literature contradicts that. And people need to be aware of that in case people guilt trip them. And that's what happened to me. And thank God I didn't commit suicide, you know. But I've stayed sober since 1985 and I just thought it would be helpful to let people be aware of this. And I think AA should be more honest about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay. All right.
Andrea, do you want to come forward?
Wait a minute. I don't know.
Okay. Never mind.
Come on.
Good morning, Mayor, Supervisors. Shane Johnson, for the record. I'm here today representing N-N-V Services. We submitted applications to the state for medical marijuana dispensaries here in Carson City and received approval for our SUPs at both 211 West Apian Way and 3359 Highway 50 East. To be clear, we applied for two distinct dispensary locations in Carson, not because we expected to win two licenses, but to allow the state more flexibility to best serve Carson City based on the location of other applicants. However, we did not receive a provisional license from the state of Nevada for a dispensary at either location due to the fact that we were outranked by at least one out-of-state applicant, possibly two. As local business owners, with a commitment to our community, we are frustrated that out-of-state companies were given preference over locals. We also do not think that it is appropriate that Carson City should be forced to allow an unlimited number of cultivators here. When deciding what medical marijuana entities would best serve the citizens of Carson City and be the best community partners, we stand before you today to ask the board to support Northern Nevada business owners in your ordinance 1.20. There is ample precedence from elsewhere in the state that you can and should play an active role in deciding what medical marijuana entities participate in this community. We believe you have the authority to modify the ordinance to maintain the power of choice within Carson City and to influence who is operating within this jurisdiction. Senator Tick Sagerblum, who helped craft NRS 453A, had stated that the legislative intent of the law was for Nevada-owned businesses to play a central role, which may include leveraging expertise of out-of-state operators, but does not imply permission for them to move in and dominate the local landscape. Somehow, the Division of Public and Behavioral Health got this wrong. Statewide, a significant number of provisional licenses were awarded to out-of-state groups with no ties to the communities. We are a highly qualified local team of parents, doctors, attorneys, entrepreneurs, and even law enforcement professionals that have been displaced by out-of-state interests in an unfairly weighted system. Our partner Julie, who is here today, was raised in Carson City, went through the schooling system here and still owns a home here. We all live in Northern Nevada. The state tilted the scale in favor of out-of-state concerns with ongoing operational experience, something that, by the way, Nevadans couldn't legally have because it hasn't been legal here before. And this for Nevadans business opportunity was then given away to these out-of-state interests. We believe that back in June, when Clark County vetted applicants prior to the state's process and did not pick groups from out-of-state, that many of those groups didn't give up, but rather shifted their attention to Northern Nevada. The state has now completed its vetting and ranking process, and now it is up to each jurisdiction to ensure that they have the proper rules and ordinances in place to take care of their own interests. If Carson City's ordinance is not revisited now, Carson City will be exposed not only to out-of-state entities with no ties to this community, but also up to seven cultivation sites. We ask the board to modify the ordinance so that the board and this community retain the right to approve individual entities based not just on the Division of Public and Behavioral Health ranking, but also a commitment to serving the needs of this community. Carson City should have confidence in the medical marijuana establishments and the owners and operators that are invited to become community partners. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Daria Shoemaker, for the record. I'm speaking on behalf of former Sparks Police Sergeant Jean Marie Walsh, who couldn't be here today after knee surgery and is getting staples taken out. And she's written a statement that I can also hand in. In January 2014, as a sergeant in the Sparks Police Department with 20 years of police experience, I was asked by the Chief of Police to be the department's representative on the citywide team tasked with building ordinances and regulations addressing the new medical marijuana establishment industry. Our team began having meetings with many people looking to break into this industry. Across the table from us were businessmen, lawyers, and real estate professionals. When N-N-V Services met with us, there was a mother, a father, and a doctor, who also happened to be solid business people. Their story brought a personal stake to the business beyond the money that could be made in this industry. During the process, it became obvious that N-N-V Services was clearly the group with the higher level of concern about the safety impact that these businesses would have on the public in general. Not just the impact of potential crime on them or their patients, but the impact on the community as a whole. They have several doctors on their team. They brought a 30-year veteran drug and alcohol abuse counselor on their team. They truly listened to me as I spoke about the dangers of this medication in homes with small or curious children. They showed interest when I commented about community outreach and asked further questions. They were the one group that got it. With my experience, contacts, and knowledge of the laws and regulations regarding medical marijuana establishments, I could have been employed by any one of those groups with the lawyers in the fancy suits. When I decided to retire from the police work, I asked N-N-V Services if they would be interested in me working with them. They were the one group that I could envision taking the extra steps to acknowledge the risks and responsibility that this industry brings. It is disappointing to see the state give preference to out-of-state operators in this industry, which is not a particularly complex business, and to place little to no value on our experience as parents, doctors, law enforcement, and our community, to our neighbors and friends, and our commitment to our neighbors and friends, to our community. I would ask you to consider taking the power back into your hands regarding what groups in the medical marijuana industry you would want in this community.
Thank you very much. Morning, Ms. Kramer.
Good morning. I have a question. Am I here when I talk as the agenda for the afternoon, Third Street and also downtown?
I didn't hear that.
Third Street and downtown for the afternoon agenda? So I should be talking at that time?
You can wait till that time, or if you want to make a comment now, you can go. Because I know we've got other people who maybe can't be here, but if you need to comment, comment.
About that?
You can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As you know, my name is Doug Kramer. I'm co-owner of Mom &amp; Pop's Diner. I'm here to talk about the permanent closing of Third Street. The reason I'm here is basically I read an article in the paper that the Citizens Committee had a priority of closing Third Street permanently. Before I came here, I decided to talk to a couple attorneys, a retired judge, and my nephew, who is a senior director in the federal government in Washington, D.C., who has also a Ph.D. in government and ethics, to make sure I knew what I was talking about. Basically, the federal government states that anything that is done has to be equal for all parties included. Third Street has three businesses. We all have to be equal. When you close the street down, I'm a daytime business. So is Ferkin and so is the wine place. But I don't open during the day. I mean, excuse me, at night. So I'm looking, when we do this, to do something different. Since 1994, the city and the supervisors have given money for events on Third Street. They've paid for all the events for 20 years. That started off with the first farmer's market, then Mom &amp; Pop's events, and also things after that. In 2008, the city supervisors decided that they wanted to increase the money that was being paid on Third Street for events and went from about $10,000 to about $30,000 to pay for the, what they call Frickin' Fridays. Now, there's a new farmer's market on Third Street and you also support that. And I just don't disagree that the support is what is good. But it's a lot of money. So over those years, I figured out that basically the city has put out about $400,000 for events just on Third Street. So that's like precedent that you have been doing over a long period of time. Now, the city and my landlord would like to close Third Street for a permanent event. If the city would like to do it, and my landlord liked to do it, I have no choice but to say, "I agree." It's a good idea if it's done properly. So we have done entertainment for 20 years on Third Street. And again, like I said, the city has paid for it all along. There is things that you can do on Third Street, but it has to have a gimmick, something that would make it work daytime and night. Now, one of the things that I've heard is that when you close the streets, there's going to be a water feature. There's going to be some type of arches over the street to make it look like it's different than the other street. And there's going to be a stage, and there's going to be gazebos, and my patio is going to be larger than it is right now since the street is closed, which benefits my business. But at the same time, it's hot during the summertime. When you're looking at your plans, you should look into misters because it would be the coolest street in all of Carson. Something totally different. And that's what you're looking for, is something to be an entertainment street. That's what you're going to be voting on, is an entertainment street, day and night. And it will cost money. Misters will make this street something where people can come down from 11 o'clock to 2 or 3:00 in the afternoon, out of the heat, sit in the benches or whatever they, you know, there, whether it's Ferkin or the wine place or myself, and enjoy a nice lunch with music or entertainment, whatever comes up with. But again, this is you, the city, closing the street. And it is your responsibility to put the entertainment on, pay for it. I can go ahead and book it, make sure that it's a good family event every day. But again, I'm not in the position financially to be starting to pay for events over a period of 50 days, over a period of six months. Because that's what, you know, if you're going to be closing this street 365 days, I would like to do about 50 or 60 daytime things. That could cost about $20-some thousand dollars. Plus, in the very beginning, you're going to have to seed money for advertising, for people to understand that this is something new in Carson, that they can come to a street, daytime or nighttime, and find events. I think that basically the daytime events at $300 to $400 a day, which is what I've talked to the Buglies, and they've told me that's about what it will cost, there are some days that I can go ahead and have some free event, but it could cost $20,000 a year over and over again because I'll put in the same request every year. Also, I'd like to do Saturday night parties. Basically geared more towards families compared to what's geared there now. Karen has done Saturday night events. I don't know what the cost is. $5,000 for a good band? Is that about right? More than that. Exactly. Now, you pay to have money paid back to you for seats and food. We can do the same thing. If the events are something and the entertainment is a high-scale entertainment, then we can draw people there at nighttime, they can pay for the event and help supplement the event over a period of time. But again, has to be some seed money for advertising these things. Because we're talking about from now on, not just five times a year or 10 times a year, at least six months. The other thing that I'd like to see maybe is solar heaters up on top. If you're going to do an area on top, why not put solar heaters? That way, you can use the street for longer before May, you know, if you have really a nice April, you can do things there. You can do things into October. You can make that in December, after the lighting of the tree, come down, listen to music, have a totally family entertainment with some heaters. And solar heaters are not going to cost the city any money other than the initial price. Again, basically, you want a gimmick. I mean, if you're going to close a street or any business, it's going to affect it. And some kind of gimmick, whether it's the heaters, the music, you want people to come down there, not just to close the street so that five to 25 nights during the summer, you're doing something. You want to do something all the time. Isn't that what closing a street for entertainment is? The one thing I have noticed, though, and listened to a lot of landlords that have come into my restaurant, that there will be a cost to all landlords when you finish doing the remodel downtown. What scares me the most is that money that you're going to be billing the landlords, they'll pay it, but then they'll end up raising our rent to cover what those costs are. It makes a small business a little scared. Myself, Garibaldi's, which is small, Basil, you know, we're all small businesses downtown. You're going to be doing construction downtown and what bothers me, and I've told my landlord, how am I going to pay my rent during that time? If there's no access to our businesses while you're doing the construction, how do we pay rent? How do we have enough? Because in a small business, you're running in a small fraction. Karen opened breakfast for a reason, not because she wanted to, but because the revenue wasn't there and they wanted to increase their revenue. Am I right or wrong on that assumption? She's shaking her head, saying yes. Otherwise, they would never have opened breakfast. But it's called revenue. When you close the street down, I'm going to have to have revenue to offset my new rent and my older people that used to come to my restaurant that pulled up right in front of our place, and now they can't. So the reason why I'm saying that basically daytime events are very important to my business, and all three of the businesses on Carson. I've heard that there's basically already a design for Third Street that's already been put together. I've heard it from a fireman. I've heard it from sheriffs. So this is a done deal, to my knowledge.
I don't know if it's a done deal, but there are designs out and around there, but City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify. And also for Doug. He's got some great ideas on Third Street. We have two different issues here that I want to make sure everyone's aware. One is the potential Third Street initiative, which I plan to bring in front of the board on November 20th. I'll invite you back.
I'll be back.
You've got some great ideas. I'd like to talk to you about it. The other issue is in front of the board today, later, approximately 2:00 p.m., and that will be on the conceptual plan for the downtown corridor improvement. Great ideas on the sequencing of that as well, and we will take those small business concerns into account as we step through the detailed planning for the downtown corridor.
Have you ever thought of how we're going to pay our rent while you're all doing the construction? I mean, because restaurants all have a small margin. I mean, volume is great, but because of food costs nowadays, my rent has almost doubled since in 20 years, electricity, so on and so forth. There is not a huge margin, as you know as well as I do. I look at Karen because she runs a restaurant. When my volume goes down to a certain level, which it does sometimes in December, I call my landlord and say, "I'll be late." Okay, I've already told him that we're going to have a problem when you do your construction. Somewhere or another, all the small businesses, not the casinos, not the other things, are going to have problems paying rent during this period of time. When you finish, hopefully, everything will be great. I'm hoping so.
Thank you, Doug.
I have one last thing to say. I've traveled to a lot of places over my lifetime. I've been to about 48 states. I've driven to most of them. And the one thing that Carson has that nobody else that I've ever seen in a downtown area is three casinos, 10 restaurants, 10 bars. We have legal offices, we have insurance companies, and we have seven government buildings. And we have very few vacancies downtown. You're going to spend $10 million to redo downtown. I hope that basically it works, but I don't understand where the new revenue is going to come from other than the existing places where the city's going to tax the landlords and then we're going to have to pay more rent. And nervously, I'm wondering whether my volume is going to be the same, whether my revenue is going to be the same in a period of time. I don't understand it sometimes, but we will talk on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Other comments? Mr. and Ms. Fisher, come on up. Good morning to you.
Hi. We're in Convo here.
Good.
My name is Andrea Fisher, and I'm here as a follow-up to a letter to the editor that appeared in the Nevada Appeal on September 27th. I had hand-delivered to each of you a copy of that letter. I have copies here if you need to refresh your memory. Basically, I expressed concern about the narrowing of the .7 miles from four travel lanes to two travel lanes. I suggested a plan to test that, to test that prior to this whole thing starting. I said in the letter, "Take a few days, set up the area to resemble how it would look or feel at the point that the project is finished." I envisioned, in this test area, which is the .7 miles, maybe using cones to block the right lane and what you would have then, and of course, giving space for the right turns. What you would have then is the one-lane travel, and you would also have the left-turn capability with the indentations that are there at the present time. I really have to question why anyone would not be opposed to this test that I have proposed when so much valuable insight could be gained prior to the expenditure of the $7,000. You could judge the travel flow. You could see if any problems existed. If problems did exist, you could address those problems. If they did not, you would have many citizens in Carson City very relieved that this was all going to work smoothly. I just don't see a downside to the test. I'm not advocating for doing the project, not doing the project, but at least with the test, you could have some insight into how this is going to work with this one lane. with this one lane, and obviously, the left turn, which is there at the present time. The present plan would permanently alter the traffic flow on Carson Street. And I think that, I don't know if this has been brought up because of my letter, or whatever, but I think it deserves further discussion among the board members. I think something of this magnitude in Carson City, where you're talking about altering it, the main drag, if you will, the main thoroughfare through the city into one lane, I just think it needs further discussion, and I just hope that you all will discuss it further, possibly. And those who are opposed to it, at least give a reason why they're opposed. It's just a test, it would be for a few days, weekdays, not weekends, and so I would, I respectfully request that you revisit that, if you've, if you've visited already, I don't know.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thanks.
Martin?
My husband, Mark.
Good morning, Mayor Crowell, good morning, members of the board. Not unlike Andrea, I have a few concerns myself, but on a totally different subject. Basically, I would describe it as the retail sector. Having had many years of retail background, I have a natural interest in, in what we do in our city, and even what goes on both north and south of our city. In my own retail experience, where I ran stores for the Saks Fifth Avenue Company for better part of thirty years, one of the things I learned is that there's always great flux in retailing, there are many changes, you know, within the community. And one of the more interesting things that I've noticed in Carson City, since arriving here in nineteen ninety-eight, is that there really have been major changes. And in fairness to the retailers in our community, if you look south and north of our city, there really is quite a bit of competition that's been added over the past ten to fifteen years. For example, south of here, you have two major centers, one that's anchored by a Walmart store on the south, the other center anchored by Best Buy. Many good retailers down there that, in essence, take away, to some degree, from our competition right within our own community. Same thing on the south side. The construction and the operation of the summit has been a major change. I mean, it's a lovely center, but it's added competition, and it's only fifteen, twenty minutes by drive now, particularly with the improvements on the freeway from Carson City. When you get into our city, obviously, we have our share of problems and changes. I want to add that, you know, there have been some very positive changes in terms of Carson Mall, but I might remind you that we have had our difficult years with Carson Mall. We're on a much better footing now with two, you know, good anchor stores, but we have had our ups and downs in that important mall. In addition, if you look at the north side of our city, we still have a development there, and I realize there are other issues, whether it be the developer, or whatever problems have gone on there, but again, you have a good-sized mall right on College Parkway, where little is happening in terms of not having a major retailer, where in fact, I believe there was a Kmart there ten, fifteen years ago. The final point on retailing is Carson Street itself. When you take the point-seven mile, which is part of the new plan that you have, I think you have to be realistic, that that in itself has been a very difficult area. We have not had new retailing going into that area. It's been a struggle, and I think there are many weaknesses in that area. Now, I well realize, and I'm totally supportive, not negative, about probably the hours and hours of work that all of you have put on this project, but I think there has to be great sensitivity to that point-seven mile, and exactly what is going to be there. I know there are plans, and I know there's reason for optimism, but I caution you, and my major concern is that retail complex. And I want to emphasize the word "concern," because I have a small proposal to offer you, now that we've, I've chatted a little bit about retailing. I think it's important that when any citizen in Carson has concerns, and this is not to be negative about the project, and I'm not entertaining any kind of thinking where we should have a meeting, where people should come and raise all their complaints about what's going on. I'm for what you're attempting to do. I'm positive about it. But I think there logically is concern in our community that we should pay attention to. I'm suggesting that you consider an evening in the not-distant future, possibly one or two hours, where presentations can be made, and there can be a sharing of constructive ideas, part of this whole plan. I think, from the letters that I've read in the Nevada Appeal, and there have been many, pro and con, I think there's thinking out there that deserves to be heard. That's not to take away from the hard work that all of you have done in order to bring this about. I believe in the project. I think there are many things about it that will be very good for our community. But I suggest that you be concerned about some of the thinking that goes on in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, other public comment? Okay, are we ready then to go close off public comment at this time? We have public comment as we go through the day, and we also will have public comment this afternoon, and we have public comment at the end, so we'll accommodate everyone. All right, let's now move to item number six, Minutes of July seventeenth. Have you had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the Minutes of July seventeenth, twenty fourteen, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the motion, discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. On the agenda, any change to the agenda, City Manager?
No changes.
Board members, any changes you want? Okay, unless there's an objection, we'll take the agenda as published. We'll now move to item number eight, special presentations, and if I could have Gil, your group, come on up, and we'll talk about National Family Caregivers Month, and then Nevada Flood Awareness. This is a proclamation entitled National Family Caregivers Month, November two thousand fourteen. It reads as follows: Whereas family caregivers play an increasingly important role in the well-being of loved ones, providing unpaid assistance with both health care tasks and activities of daily living; and whereas more than a third of Nevadans over the age of fifty, me, currently provide unpaid care for a parent, spouse, disabled child, or other relative or friend; and whereas more than five hundred thousand family caregivers in Nevada provide unpaid assistance equivalent to three hundred and forty-eight million hours, and an estimated value of four billion dollars each year; and whereas the proportion of Nevada's population that is over sixty is growing more rapidly than other components; and the United States Census Bureau estimates that about twenty-four percent of Nevadans will be over the age sixty by twenty thirty; and whereas older adults who receive cost-effective services at home are more likely to continue to live independently in communities without needing nursing home care or utilizing public assistance; and whereas to successfully address the surging population of older adults and others with significant needs for long-term services and support, we must develop methods to encourage and support Nevada's family caregivers, while developing ways to recruit and retain a qualified, responsive in-home care workforce. And whereas Carson City, Nevada supports and applauds the dedicated work of family caregivers, and recognizes caregiving for older, vulnerable, or disabled Nevadans as a vital and needed profession today and in the future. Now therefore, I, Robert L. Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim November two thousand fourteen as Family Caregivers Month, and I know I've got Gil here. Gil, would you like to talk a little bit about it, please? Mary?
Mary Liverati is our state president, and Mary might want to say a few words, I'll be glad to say a few afterwards.
All right. Yes, I'm Mary Liverati, for the record, the state president of AARP Nevada, which is a volunteer position, and we are promoting on a regular basis, we have Caregiver Connections series of talks, to talk to caregivers about resources that are available, to have talks with older adults that may be having difficult driving, having that discussion that we all dread facing with our parents, and just other things that help caregivers and strengthen their ability to be able to provide those services. So we're really pleased that you're recognizing this month. We are, the Caregiver Coalition of Northern Nevada is having a luncheon on November eighteenth up in Reno, the Atlantas, to honor caregivers and give out some caregiving awards. So we really appreciate that you've taken the time to recognize them today, and the wonderful work that family caregivers do. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to add to that, I want to thank the mayor, the Board of Supervisors, for this proclamation. It means a lot to all the caregivers in our community, as well as statewide. Like a lot of you and people who are in this room, we recently became faced with this problem, and when it, when it hits you right in the face, you really realize the challenge that it is to provide care, what you feel adequate care, and it's, it's a learning process. And people that you talk to, you feel, and you realize that you're all facing the same challenges. And I think the amount of information that is currently available from AARP, on their websites, and at these various meetings that have been held, both in north and south Nevada, it's, it's an amazing thing, and people should take advantage of that, because you don't want to learn by making mistakes, learn by profiting from the information everybody else has learned, as far as the right way to go about it. So thank you very much.
And lastly, I'm Maria Dent, I'm on staff at AARP Nevada, and I want to thank the mayor and everyone here for acknowledging caregivers in our, in our state. I am a caregiver, I'm fortunate to have parents who are eighty-two, and a dear friend who just turned a hundred, so I know that in this process of caregiving, I too have learned a lot, and I thought I knew a lot. So caregiving is a forever-changing field, and so I want to acknowledge your thanks. And Mary gave you little hearts, and it has lots of caregiving resources on that website, so thank you in behalf of all of us.
Do you want to get a picture?
Can I get a group picture with everybody?
Come on up here in front of the board here, so we can all get in here.
This is the only time I'll ever be at a public meeting and not talk, for those of you who know me, for those of you who know me. For those of you who know me, absolutely.
I didn't want to get you started.
Open the proclamation, Gil.
Can you see everybody behind us here, too?
Uh, yeah, perfect.
Good to see you again, Barry.
Always a pleasure.
All right. Stacy and Rob?
Rob kindly put this together and then decided to go somewhere else, so I'm here for you, ma'am.
Oh.
Yeah, so I get to talk.
Oh. I don't know about that, man. I know, man, I heard that, I thought, maybe, I think I'll go back up there. This is a proclamation for Nevada Flood Awareness Week, November tenth through the fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. It reads as follows: Whereas Carson City recognizes significant threat flooding poses to residents, we've seen that, the city and our local economy, and whereas Carson City has endured repeated flood events from a watershed in the Carson River Basin, including historic floods of nineteen eighty-six, nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand and five, and even recently, and whereas Carson City is at particular risk of flooding, mostly from rain causing rapid melting of snow, and whereas during Nevada Flood Awareness Week, local and, local, state, and federal agencies across the state are working together to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, how to protect their homes and families from a flood, and a plan for recovery. And whereas Nevada Flood Awareness Week, two thousand fourteen, will be held statewide the week of November fifth, November tenth through the fifteenth, and whereas the theme for Nevada Flood Awareness Week, two thousand fourteen, is Nevada Floods, Are You Prepared? And the corresponding website is www.nevadafloods.org. And whereas Carson City will participate in Nevada Flood Awareness Week, and supports increased public awareness in flood threats. Now I therefore, now I, Robert L. Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proclaim November tenth through the fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, as Nevada Flood Awareness Week in Carson City, and encourage all residents to take action and prepare appropriately. And I know we've been through a lot of, we've been through a lot of preparedness and flood issues already this year. So Stacy, let me give this to you and Shyla.
Sir?
Okay, come on, come on.
Hi, I'm Shyla Lemmons, I work with Rob Fellows in the Stormwater Flood Plane Management Department. This is a new annual thing that the state and all the counties are trying to put together. Please go to the nevadafloods.org webpage, lot of information there, on all the counties and what's going to be going on. Stacy will tell you, we will be doing a sandbag demo during the week on Thursday, the do's and don'ts of sandbagging. It doesn't sound very exciting, but believe me, it can get very exciting. So we do appreciate the proclamation, and we'll work hard to keep all the citizens happy.
Thanks.
Really don't know how to follow that.
I don't have that much more information. It's November thirteenth at the Marv Texera Pavilion. It is an opportunity for you to see how our Public Works Department works in terms of flooding. And also, as a reminder, Carson City has received accreditation from the National Weather Service as a storm-ready community. So that means we have warning systems in place, emergency plans in place. It doesn't mean that we'll avert damage in a disaster, it, because really, try as we may, there are always going to be problems, but it does mean that we're prepared to deal with them to the best of our ability. So thank you for acknowledging that, and it's really about community preparedness, and that's really the message we want to get across.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Shyla. Say hello to Rob and tell him, thank you. Okay. All right, we'll now move on to item number nine. Assessor, Kimberly, you going to do this? Good morning to you.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Kimberly Adams with the Carson City Assessors Office. I bring before you today an item at the request of Carl's Jr. As many of you know, they tore down Carl's Jr., and they requested that the remainder portion of the taxes be removed, and be prorated from the date that they tore down the structure. Parcel number is zero zero four, zero one one, nine eight. It was located at thirteen fifteen South Carson Street. The taxes only were for the structure, they leased the land, so there were no land taxes attributed to the amount of the removal. Two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-three cents, plus thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents in penalties, is the total amount to be removed from the real property tax roll. They did pay the first installment, as stated before, this would result in a refund of a hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Okay. Supervisor McKenna has a question or comment.
Is this discretionary, or is it mandatory?
According to the statute, it does say that the board may remove the remainder of the taxes and prorate from the destruction date.
Okay. Other comments from the board, public? Questions in order.
Kimberly, do you have an idea if the lease for Carl's Jr.'s was terminated when the building was torn down, or prior to?
That I do not.
Just wondering who the legal liability for the taxes would belong to if the lease was terminated.
The lease parcel was created at the request of Carl's Jr. and the owner. We do that from time to time for situations like that, so that the property owner doesn't have to extrapolate out the portion for that one building. I can look to see at their request, yeah, in their request to us, we did ask it for writing, it doesn't state when their lease was up with Carrington Company. Did I answer your question? Yeah.
Okay. I don't know why we wouldn't do this. Motion's in order, supervisor, ready to vote.
I move to approve the removal refund of a portion of the taxes for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal year on parcel number zero zero four dash zero one one dash nine eight, thirteen fifteen South Carson Street, per NRS three six one point seven six eight, in the amount of two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-three cents, plus thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents of penalties, for a total of two thousand six hundred and eight dollars and eleven cents.
Motion, and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, ready for vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let's now take up the Justice Court. We have, who's here? Max, you bring in the big guy, huh?
Good morning, Mayor O'Kroll, Supervisors.
Justice Armstrong, good morning to you.
I am Carson City Justice of the Peace in Department One. I appreciate you taking the time to consider our proposal, my proposal today. I enjoy coming here and getting a little nervous coming before the Board of Supervisors.
Come on.
As a reminder, for what litigants must feel when they have to come see me in the robe down in the Justice Court. So, I appreciate, I appreciate that. What we're asking here is, there's a statute that's been on the books since, I believe, 97. The legislature has indicated that a local government for counties less than 100,000 could pass basically an approval for a $10 filing fee on, it's basically on civil cases, to be used for drug and alcohol prevention and particularly specialty courts, drug courts. The Justice Court has never asked the board to do this. The District Court has been doing it for a long time and in fact, they use that money to fund the Juvenile Family First Drug Court and the Juvenile Drug Court and wonderful programs that, you know, Master Lewis runs and they do a lot of good for the community. I have one short anecdote I want to tell you and I have literally thousands of these since I've been. The judge is, yesterday I saw a young man. I sentenced him on two misdemeanor counts, petty larceny and obtaining money by false pretenses. Essentially, he shoplifted and then pawned what he stole to fund his heroin habit. And he's 21 years old, no criminal history, nice family, and he was out on bail because he was so young and he, I put him on, you know, alternative sentencing, supervised him while he was out on bail and he continued to use heroin, got caught, and he spent some time in jail because I couldn't trust him out on bail. This young man, he was sentenced, I'm ordering him to go to counseling, he's going to be supervised, he's going to be drug tested, and I hope he's on his way to, you know, recovery. And while I'm sentencing him, I'm, in my mind, I'm saying, this is the perfect candidate. This is the young man who needs to have a place, a drug court, where not only is he going to get all of that, but he's going to get frequent contact with the court, frequent monitoring, and all the literature, all the best evidence indicates that's the best model for successful outcomes for these types of offenders. And that's just one of literally thousands that I see in my job. And the frustration of not being able to get together a misdemeanor drug court, it just, you know, it just was, came back to me yesterday. And so, and to speak to that, I'm not a big fan of fee increases. I'm not a fan of fee increases at all. And I recognize that there is some burden on the court users, an extra $10 for filing fees, and that's, that $10, you know, it adds up over time and that's what we hope for to do is add up to help fund a drug court. But we've applied for grants. I think in my less, you know, three and a half years, we've applied for seven grants, both state and federal, been rejected every single time. The grant money has shrunk, has shrunken. The, I'm limited to raise private money based on my position as a judge, although there might be ways around that if we have a program that we can point to to help expand. And so, when I, when I realized that this was, this was a resource that was not tapped, I just thought, I felt compelled because I passionately believe that this is needed in this community and I felt compelled to come to the board, ask for the board's approval of this. So, that being said, you know, there are some concerns about the increase in the fees. I have those concerns. I wanted to be known that those who cannot afford any filing fee in the Justice Court for any reason, they can apply to receive what's called an informed popper, which means without, with their indigent, and I sign those waivers all the time, all kinds of matters, to answer a complaint, to file a complaint, all, there's a fee waivers for those that are indigent on every case. It's not going to impact access to justice for anybody. And it is, I think, for the greater good. I'm on the Specialty Court Funding Committee for the, for the administrative offices of the court. I got on that committee in hopes of trying to figure out a way to get some of these other courts established to help some of these, you know, some of these people. That's funded by administrative assessment revenue. That pool's been shrinking since 2008 significantly. Throughout the state, every specialty court budget has been cut or frozen and there is absolutely, every year we're trying to get, to have them start up a new one and there's just no money yet and there may not be. The final thing I'm saying, I want to point out here is that what this amounts to in anticipated revenue is about $20,000. This board has also previously approved that the American Claims for Misdemeanor Marijuana Possession can be applied toward drug and alcohol treatment and specialty courts. That, those two together will get us, we're hoping in the range of $25,000 and in our number crunching, that will get us a good start. Eight to 10 participants, long-term treatment, you know, supervision and gives us, what it also will give us is a program we can point to, we're applying for grants, or we're going to the public to try to expand with, with other revenue sources. But it'll give us a foothold and that's all I'm asking for. I think it'll do it. So, if you have any questions, we may happen to answer them, but I urge you to approve this.
Yeah, I think Judge very eloquently stated, you know, the issues that are out there. And, you know, the specialty courts, particularly these drug and alcohol and mental health courts, they really work if they're utilized properly and we've seen that work here, you know, and I think at the end of the day, it doesn't affect this, but I think at the end of the day, you know, we do have to look at continually adding assessments on civil filings to fund activities that really have nothing to do with the civil filing. I mean, it's, that's an odd situation that we do and we do it on a lot of different things. And so, you know, maybe this, you know, we always keep hoping that at some point in time, somebody will take a look at all these kind of miscellaneous assessments that we add on to these things and find a different way of, of maybe sharing the burden or at least making the burden a little bit more applicable to the area that we're trying to attack. But, so, that's my sense.
And I'd like to speak to that.
Sure.
You know, what's known in, through the courts, or known as, they're called Blackjack Fees, it's named after a case where the courts are authorized to charge for services that, that cost, you know, and, and I'm going to say that in Carson City, we do very few, if any Blackjack Fees. We, we charge the assessments that are, that are set by statute. We charge, there's a few, a few fees that we charge for setting up payment plans to pay fines or, you know, there's a warrant fee. But aside from that, we don't charge, just, we don't charge, charge the users fees, the court is there to provide the services and, and that's what we do and that's budgeted and, you know, and that's how it works. So, I agree, I feel your concerns and I wish I had other options and I wouldn't be here.
I got that.
If I felt there were.
No, I understand it.
And I agree that it's not, civil filing fees have very little direct nexus to what I want to use this money for, but I also feel that they're part of the community, they use, you know, this is going to benefit everybody. And one thing I want to point out about the cost is, take for example, the one individual that I, that I mentioned yesterday. He got caught one time doing some petty crimes. He's had a heroin habit, I talked to him about it since he was 18 years old, three years. I'm venturing to guess, it wasn't the first time he's victimized the community by committing crimes and the social cost, and if one person, if we take one individual like this and turn him around and get him off of their addiction and is going forward, it's going to pay back the community tenfold in health costs, in, in less crime in the community. I mean, just one person turning around long-term is, is well worth the burden that I think this is going to cost.
I got you, I got you. Supervisor McKenna, then Supervisor Rayboud.
The concern is that first we approve the fee, then the court's created, then the court's successful and you need more money, so there's, then there's more fees and it's a never-ending story. I understand the need for it. I don't like putting people in jail because that's probably the most expensive way to deal with their problem, but what do you think of those comments?
Yeah, well, Supervisor McKenna, I will say, I don't believe, aside from the $10 assessment that the District Court's had forever, I don't believe the courts have come to supervisors for money for any of these programs. We have a robust specialty court that's funded with outside sources, there's, there's a Family First Drug Court for Renification of Parents and Children, the Juvenile Division, as well as the Juvenile Drug Court that's funded through the District Court's assessments. There's the Western Regional Drug Court that's funded through the AOC. I don't feel like, I'm not going to make any promises that if there's a good reason to come to the city or supplement the court's budget for these kinds of programs in the future, that we would never do that. But I know that this is not the time to be asking the city for additional money. That's why I'm here asking you to give permission to the courts to raise the money to do it. I don't believe it's a never-ending story. I think that funding can come from a number of sources and my vision is this part of it, hopefully grant money, but grants are year-to-year, so this would be more of a stable funding aspect, grants are year-to-year. The courts are willing to put in the work, I'm willing to do the work it takes to manage it. We have alternative sentencing in place that can help with the supervision aspect and they do a great job of doing that. But there's a place for private, for private, for the community to have ownership of these programs and to invest in these. I just can't stand out as a judge, stand out in front of the service committee and say, please donate. There's ways around that. I think the rules allow Max to do that, but I want to have a successful program we can point to, so if we do have to expand or it does look like it needs to expand, that we can go out and show the community, this is what works, this is what we're doing here and we can all help out and, and I think do what's right. So, I don't, I don't feel like it's going, we're going to keep coming back, you're asking for money, we, that's not been the pattern. All we're asking the supervisor to do is to pass an ordinance the legislature already felt was appropriate to help fund these programs.
Good morning, Judge. You, I first want to say thank you to Max for answering all my questions. I really do appreciate it, have a better understanding of what's going on. And your presentation this morning, Judge, was very thorough. And if I understand it correctly, you can apply for a waiver on the additional fees. And that was my concern, is the additional fees coming in. So, I see this is a positive effect on our community, helping individuals, which will actually help our community. So, I do recommend we vote in favor of this. That being said, if I may just interject something off this subject, as a person spoke at the podium about AA and religious, there are some other lawsuits in other states based upon the same criteria. If this court could consider this maybe and look at that as a, something to bring back and look at in the future, just a recommendation, so.
Well, I'll just speak briefly to it. I don't want to get off, off-topic, I'll just speak briefly to it. This is not the first time these concerns have been raised and the AA or 12-step type programs are oftentimes a huge component of rehabilitation and treatment. I've been to training on these sorts of things and there are alternative 12-step type programs that are completely secular, don't have the spiritual type component. I don't want to speak, I'm not an expert in AA, I'm not, I, I know that it's utilized, but there are alternatives that can be, that if anyone petitions or refuses on religious grounds to participate in AA, this court, I can say, is not going to interfere with that. But, and there are alternatives that are, that are professed to be secular, but I can't say, to answer your request, I will investigate those more further, you know, more closely to make sure that they're, they're appropriate programs, that sort of thing, but my understanding is there are alternatives. And I've been to trainings, drug court trainings where they indicate that in certain circumstances that may be appropriate and that's, we'd never mandate someone to go to anything that's against a religious beliefs, period.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Public comments? Board, Supervisor Rayboud, go.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 116, an ordinance amending the Carson City Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.37, fees on court actions to support programs for prevention and treatment of abuse of alcohol and adding two new sections, 2.37.030 and 2.37.040, to include Justice Courts pursuant to NRS 4.075 and NRS 453.580 and other matters properly related thereto.
Motion in a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to Joe Ward. He was very instrumental in helping us with the ordinance.
Very good. All right. All right, let's take up alternative sentencing. Tad? Mr. Fletcher, come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Tad Fletcher, Chief of Alternative Sentencing for the record. I'm here today to ask for the approval of a grant that we've been offered for our fifth consecutive year, covering our third DUI diversion program. It's been a great program. Just to kind of give you an idea, from the time we started, we've had 31 people successfully complete the program. We've only had seven not complete the program for noncompliance. And then we've had three for deaths and different things that happen in life, but in all, it's been very successful. The grant's for $50,000 and it has a 20% match. I did put the numbers in there showing 39,000, so you, to show the real numbers. We do have our match, but we do cover the benefits of our DUI Case Manager and lab testing, equipment, the chemicals go into all the drug and alcohol testing, so that's kind of the ballpark we are.
So, the question, I think, Tad, and I saw some traffic related to this, is what's the out-of-pocket cost? I mean, is it, is there, are you asking for additional funds or are you just taking existing costs right now and applying them to a grant?
They are budgeted for. When we put in for all this stuff, we do budget for those and we put in for this grant every year. So, it's basically the approval of the grant so we can continue in our program.
Okay. Public comments? Board?
Yeah, public comments.
Come, come on up.
Again, my name is Christopher Bruce Diley and regarding the DUIs and alternative sentencing, I believe that the, that we need far more severe laws against drunken driving, that this has gone on, quote ordered AA, has gone on since the 1930s and 40s from the co-founder, Dr. Bob of AA. He worked with judges to have people quote ordered. So, it's gone on for, for many, many decades and yet, the carnage continues. You know, AA, despite that, AA has not stopped drunk driving. I believe that places that have far more severe laws, it reduces drunk driving, it prevents it. So, I think that's what we're lacking, is severe laws to stop it and quit the tolerance of drunken driving and sending people to AA because it hasn't worked and.
Okay, well, I don't want to get too far down on the road on whether this program works or not. I mean, because at the end of the day, we've got a state law that we have to deal with on this and, you know, this is primarily directed towards third-term, third-offense DUI offenders, which, you know, I may have thoughts similar to yours as to whether or not this works or not, but I think that, you know, that's what the law says and so now the question is, do we want to fund that or not? I mean, so.
That's, that's my point, is that, I, when I was in high school, I had two individuals, by the time I was 19 years old, two of these individuals, one of them had seven DUIs, the other one had eight DUIs by the time they were 19 years old. I'm like, how can this be? You know, if you have severe enough laws, this won't occur and people won't be killed when they have their fourth or fifth DUI, you know, and people, and then there's an outrage of why, well, why did they, why were they allowed to have all these DUIs? You know, why didn't they stop this to begin with? And that's the point. So, it's not about whether or not AA works because AA does work, you know, in many respects it does. The point is, is that it hasn't stopped DUI.
Okay.
And that's how it applies to this. And just one other point is that even AA says that it's a voluntary program of attraction, not promotion, yet it has a pamphlet that says, "It sure beats sitting in a cell." So, it's telling two different things, you know, it's saying that it's voluntary, but it isn't. People are forced to, and as far as what was said about secular programs, I've been sober for 29 years and I, these secular programs, you can barely name any of them. You know, the public is very aware of Alcoholics Anonymous, but ask the public to name one secular program and nobody has any knowledge of it, hardly anybody has any knowledge of these things because they're like, they're either fly-by-night or they're, they're not substantial enough to get people in there. Instead, I've been in AA meetings with people who are court ordered and they're like, I don't believe in God, I don't want to be here, I don't believe in God. And yet, they're there, they're forced, they have to be there or they go to jail.
All right. I got you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Brad?
Ted, a couple of questions for you. Can you speak to your hopes to get the DUI 2 program approved and how you might do that and then also your efforts to make the DUI 3 program self-sustaining?
We have as a team over at the courthouse, Max has been trying to get several different grants to fund the DUI 2 program along with that, the misdemeanor drug court. And as they said earlier, we've been very unsuccessful trying to find funds for that. We do need that, I'll be honest with you, we do need a DUI 2 program. We have, our numbers in those, the number of arrests in the city are astronomical. But in terms to get the DUI 3 program self-sufficient, I think the day's coming real quick that we're going to have to fund this program, if we're going to have to maintain it. The last several years, the state's been saying this grant's going to go away and it's going to go away. Last year, they said it was going to be the last year, now this year, they're kind of hinting that this could be the last year. Now this year, they're kind of hinting that this could be the last year. Through fees, electronic monitoring, we bring in anywhere from 25,000 to 35,000 a year, depending on the number of people going through the program, the kind of supervision that we're doing. I don't know if we'll ever get to that full amount to fully fund the program, but I think we can get part of the way there. But it's, it, all, all the money that we bring in depends on the number of people in the program. And right now, we have 27 people in the program, and we have three pending that we're probably going to be bringing in, in January, so. Yep.
Okay. Other comments? Board? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the state of Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety Project Number 956781041, grant award of $50,000 for the period of October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2015, to fund a full-time DUI case manager position.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, a couple of seconds, I think there are three of them, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Maybe take a look at the legislature, if you guys have an organization about, you know, there's a, they create the law that provides for this mechanism, and as frequently the case, they don't create the other side of the implementation. So kind of keep that in mind. And if you see, see an opportunity where, you know, this board can weigh in on something like that, let us know, okay?
Okay. I will do that. Thank you. All right. Bye. Thank you. Have a good day.
All right. Alan, you want to do the IT?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. This is the annual report on the Recorder's Technology Fund. This is a requirement of state statute that, that recorders in the state report to their county commissioners, and our case, the Board of Supervisors. The amount of money that we have received from the Recorder's Technology Fund, it's raised from $3 on every recording that we do in there. And I must say, this is the earliest we have ever gotten this done. Usually, I bring this report like in February or March, but because of the good work of Mr. Providenti and his staff, we got the interest income figure right away. And what it requires is, we show you what we have spent over the, in the last fiscal year, and in our projections, which are always rather broad. I would like to point out one thing in here for the estimated expenditures for the next fiscal year. I've upped the training and travel budget to $3,000. When this fund was originally proposed at the legislature, what the legislators wanted was training for county recorders. There's no qualifications to be the county recorder, as I am an example of that. And so it was their idea, in the Nevada Taxpayers Association, that said, "We want you to go to conferences." And they have an excellent one in which Sue Meriwether, the new clerk recorder, attended this year, which is called NACRAC, the National Association of Clerks and Recorder. Excellent program. And she really got a lot out of it. And there's several of those, so I'm encouraging her to go to more of them. The problem with one of the, one of them is in Washington, DC every year, and that ain't cheap, you know? So anyway, and then the rest of it, we put into software, hardware, and data conversion and so forth in there. So it's the annual report.
Public comment? Hearing none. Board comments?
Alan, just a quick question for you. I see that by the end of next fiscal year, the estimate is that you're not leaving Sue with any money left in the account. Do you anticipate any, any additional, any additional data conversion or hardware, software expenses going into the 15, 16 fiscal year?
The upcoming, or the year after that? We, well, we generate, we're anticipating generating, what, about 28,000 a year? It rolls. It isn't one of those that you have to spend every year. And for years, we, you know, we built that fund up, and back when things were really rolling in the state, we were bringing in twice this amount of money in there. But when the economy turned down and recordings dropped off, our revenues dropped off substantially in there. But I think it's on the way back up, and, you know, you just kind of adjust what you do.
Well, specifically, what I'm, what I'm asking is, are there additional software upgrades or hardware upgrades that you need in the office going into the 15, 16 year? Or is this going to get us through a period of upgrades that we needed?
It will get us through those upgrades in there. We, we pay every year to ADS here in Carson, which does work for the clerks and the recorders and the treasurers. And we pick up the tab, as John knows, for the software, for the, the software that handles the digitizing of all the records for the whole city. And traditionally, that was a general fund obligation, and then when times got bad and we had the funds to do it, we, we agreed to pick that up. But no, this will get us through, we, very comfortably, in there.
Does this cover voting, or is this just for recording of items?
No, this is, and this is an area we have to be very careful, because we've had former city managers who wanted us to spend money in other areas, but no, this can only be spent on recorder stuff. It cannot be spent on the clerk's side of the budget. So we have to be very careful that this only spent for items for the recorder. Now, I don't know what Sue wants to do, but there are a lot of new packages and data software that's out there for recorders that frankly, I chose not to purchase, because I didn't think it was worth the money. But she may have a totally different view than I have, and she may go ahead and, you know, pick up some of that. It's really kind of her call, but they'll evaluate that and, and look at it, so.
Okay. Motion's in order. Supervisor, go.
I move to accept the annual Recorder's Technology Fund report as submitted by the Carson City Clerk Recorder.
Motion second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much, Alan. Okay. Item 13A, VNC Construction.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Supervisors. Kim Belt, purchasing contracts manager. This action is to determine, staff is asking the Board of Supervisors to approve our recommendation that VNC Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive, responsive and responsible bidder, and to award the contract, contract number 1415063, for the John D. Winter Centennial Park ADA Improvement Project. There were three bidders for this project. We opened bids on October 6th. Engineer's estimate was 110,238. We're asking to award the base bid amount, 98,10250, plus a additive alternate, which is chain link fencing for the project, and the amount of 6,888, $6,880 to be funded through the Quality of Life and Residential Construction Tax Funds. And there is money in both of those accounts to cover the cost.
Budgeted?
Yes.
Budgeted amount?
Yes.
Public comment? Board comments? Supervisor Shirk?
Good morning. Thank you for the response back to my, excuse me, my email on the dollar amounts in the account, and the accounts. I do appreciate that. I know it was submitted as late material as well, and I do want to comment on, I, I think having the visual where these projects are taking place within the city, it helps for us, the board members, and for the community, so I do appreciate this as well. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Further comments? Discussion? Motion's in order. Supervisor Brinkowski, go.
I move to determine that VNC Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute, Chapter 338, and to award contract number 1415-063, titled John D. Winter Centennial Park ADA Improvements, to VNC Construction, Inc., for a base bid amount of 98,102.50, plus additive alternate number one, 6,880, and a contingency amount not to exceed 10,498, for a total contract amount of 115,480.50 to be funded from the Capital Projects Construction Accounts in the Parks and Recreation Quality of Life and Residential Construction Funds, as provided in the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor Shirk, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Thank you. Kim, we're going to take up item number B, the rejoiner contract. I know we've got Nikki here.
Right.
Why don't we just go direct to Nikki? We all know what's on the agenda, so why don't you tell us what's going on here? And Nikki Akers, and, well, just, why don't you give us a rundown? I, I know we know the particulars of what, you know, the procurement stuff, but tell us what's, you know, tell us more about what's happening here.
So this is to approve purchase orders, and what this is, is purchasing of vaccines. And it's flu, it's all the vaccines that we give in the different clinics, the pods. And so what it is, is we purchase through a buying group called MCAP, and that's in order that we can get the best prices.
Brad?
Just some clarifications. In our board packet, there's two different amounts for the not-to-exceed price. One is 310,281.90, and the other is 232,923.45. And I just wanted to note that it's the $310,000 amount that is correct.
Correct.
And then also on the rejoinder contracts for GlaxoSmithKline, the expiration date of that rejoinder contract is actually December 35th, or 31st? 31st. 35th. It's a whole new year. December 31st, 2015, not 2014. And the merit contract expires June 30th, 2015, not June 30th, 2013.
Correct.
So I just wanted to read those clarifications into the record.
Okay. Supervisor Shirk?
Yes. Good morning.
Hi.
Again, I appreciate your response back to my questions, but if you could just maybe touch base on those questions that I asked?
Sure.
And that was, what type of vaccines? Not, you don't have to list each one, but, and then my question about the citizens, who will get that vaccine? And is Douglas County contributing to that amount?
So to your first question, let me get it up here. What types of vaccines? Again, like I said, it's flu, and it's any vaccine that we give in the clinic. It can be the HPV, it's the shingles vaccine, MMR, which is the measles and rubella, and a number of other vaccines. So it covers all of our vaccine. You're, the second question about if someone from another county comes to get a vaccination, are we going to turn them away? We don't. We give, we don't disqualify anybody based on the county in which they live. We've got a lot of people that do business here in Carson City, live, or work in here in Carson City, so it helps our community also. And about funding, that Douglas County is contributing to the vaccinations. So some of the flu and T-DAT vaccine that we're purchasing, that's on this purchase order, is, it's in our SLV, our school-located vaccination program, so that's purchased with grant funds. And then Douglas County does contribute to the clinic down there, what we do. It's hard to pull out exactly how much goes for vaccinations, because we look at the revenue that's brought in, we look at our expenses, and then charge back to Douglas County for services.
And, thank you, I appreciate it. And I just want to comment on the flu vaccines that was given out. Again, excuse me. Very well done. I mean, we, we went through there with our family, and it was so fast, so quick, and it was really, really good. Do you have any idea how many flu shots you gave out during that time period?
1,420.
Wow.
And we saw about 770, there were about 770 cars that went through.
Thank you very much.
And there's another one in Douglas County this weekend.
Hi, Nikki.
Hi.
Just a question for those that are intolerant of some of the flu vaccines because of the egg suspension. Do you, are you offering anything out there that is not suspended that way?
We don't have that particular vaccine. If they do have an egg allergy, we encourage them to go to their physician.
Anything else? Public comment? Board, are we ready? Motion, Supervisor, go.
I move to approve purchase orders number 2015-016 and 017, 018, 019, 020, and 027, for the purchase of various vaccinations for Health and Human Services Department through a rejoinder contract with Sanofi Pasteur, Merck Sharp, and Dome Corp., GlaxoSmithKline Pharmaceuticals, in the total amount of 310,281.90, to be funded from the Health and Human Services Supplies Private Vaccine Account for fiscal year 2014-2015.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor, second by Supervisor Brinkowski, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much. Now, let's take up the sodium hypochlorite, chloride tank replacement project. I know we've got here, why don't we just, if we need, if we've got questions regarding the bidding process or the procurement, we'll, Kim, you stick around, but I think, let's go direct to Mr. Schultz, and talk to us about what's going on here on the nuts and bolts of it.
Sure. Good morning, Darren Schultz, Public Works, for the record. This project is, basically what we're doing down there is, is replacing existing sodium hypochloride tank. I knew I'd struggle with that word this morning. Hypochlorite, that's right. Don't ask me to say it again, please. And it's, it's, it's a project that, that we've, it's been on our radar for a little bit of time, but, but ultimately, we, we, we were told by our fire department that we need to do something about it and fix it. So we're doing that. It is, there was some questions about the cost of the project and it being over our estimate, and it was. My answer to that is, this is a very unique, very unusual-type project. We had no real data, real numbers to compare to, so we were somewhat guessing in the dark when we were putting together our estimate. And further, when the bids came in, a lot of the cost was, the overones were related to the, the, the material costs. To add on that vein, the contractor that was successful, KG Walters, is also our C-Mar contractor that we have selected for our, the, the big projects down there at Wastewater. And we're comfortable with, with their numbers and their work that they've done for us in the past, so we're in favor moving forward.
Good morning, Darren. Is this tank replacement part of the overall renovation plan, or is this in addition to that plan?
Both. It was not in our original plan of renovations for the plant, but it's part of the aging infrastructure of the plant. We were hoping to push it off longer than we did, but a leak in our existing tank caused us to move this up today. So the money for this is being paid for out of the 32 million dollars that we do overall improvements for the plant. It's moving up earlier in the phase. Obviously, we're going to do this years later, so.
Jim, go.
And I understand this correctly, it was originally going to be done at some time later, we're just moving it forward, so that 32 million was always going to compensate that improvement as it was, even, no matter when we did it.
That's correct.
Date-wise.
That's correct.
Okay.
Hi, Darren. Just asking this question, even though it is part of the overall plan, for the Oversight Committee, do you make them aware when you have these priorities that have to be adjusted in terms of expenditures?
We, we don't. The, the, it's our, it's our understanding that the Oversight Committee is there to ensure that money that was collected to be used on reinvestment is being spent on reinvestment. And in this case, we're, the money that is being spent on reinvestment has not changed. And, and our, and our plan for the, the 32 million dollars is, 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 is to fix the requirements at the plant, and, and there's maybe 30 or 40 pieces, and, and those are changing almost weekly. So the overall goal of, of where that money is being spent is continuing as we stated it would at the beginning of the year, and these priorities are changing on us a lot. So I, I don't believe that we're infringing on, on why that committee is there, and that we're, we're doing our due diligence, and...
Public comment? Don't see any board comment? Supervisor, go. Motion's in order.
I move to determine that KG Walters Construction Company, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute, Chapter 338, to award contract number 1415-061, titled Sodium Hypochlorite Tank Replacement Project, KG Walters Construction Company, Inc., for a base amount of 499,500, with a contingency amount not to exceed 25,000, for a total contract amount of 524,500, to be funded from the Capital Projects Construction Account in the sewer fund, as provided in fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. budget.
Motion by Supervisor Rayba, second by Supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posnay, carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Kim, take up the next one.
This is approval for a blanket purchase order for the purchase of equipment and services for the monitoring and maintenance systems for the Carson City Security Systems from Stanley Convergent Security Solutions. This is contractual services, and it'll be taken out of the Contractual Service and Building Repair Fund. Carson City uses Stanley Convergent for sixteen facilities. Stanley also provides parts needed when work is performed by city staff. And facilities maintenance reports, they have not suffered malfunctions with any of the major components using this firm. Is there any questions specific about this project? Bob Keith's here to answer any questions.
Good morning, Bob.
Go right, go right ahead, Bob. Let's see what we've got here. Supervisor Brinkowski's got a couple of questions, so let him start off, and then I'm sure we'll fill in here, and Supervisor Shirk, go next.
Good morning, Bob. I had sent you an email just wanting a breakdown on how much of this contract is for monitoring and how much is for replacement parts, and how much is for future upgrade projects. Can you go over that, please?
Yeah, monitoring, I think we're, with Stanley, we're right around twenty-two hundred dollars a year. We also have a service contract with them for software support that runs us roughly thirty-five hundred dollars a year, three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars a year. We also hire them out for our card access system, which can run us as much, when we use their services for installation repairs, and that can run us roughly a thousand dollars, maybe fifteen hundred a year. We do most of the card access installations in-house, but we do buy the parts from them. By doing it in-house, we get it, we can do it for about half the price, and our repairs and stuff have been averaging anywhere from two to three thousand dollars a year when we do it in-house for the repairs. And then installation, there's, there was, you know, I was asked about installing some more locks over at the courthouse, that could run us, if we hired out with them, it can run us up to ten thousand bucks. If we do it in-house, it'll be roughly five thousand. That hasn't been decided yet if they're going to go forward with that, but.
Good morning. I had sent three questions over also, which I did get the response, but when we read the agenda item, and I'm just alluding to, maybe we could do a little bit better when it says the purchase of equipment and services, we don't know what those services are, we don't know what that equipment is. So I think a little more input would be helpful. The response I got was very good, but I think this should have been submitted as late material, these answers, because I think it's very pertinent to the questions I asked, such as, I don't know if you want to go through those, but I mean, you somewhat answered it by the previous question, so I'm comfortable with that. But I think what we need is a more, more detail. We just can't have it this way. I appreciate the fact that you gave me the answers, I just wish that we could maybe get this on a better track to get this before us and before the public, to make decisions so we're not have to do the homework that we're doing now. So I do appreciate the fact that you answered me, I really, really do. Thank you so much.
Public comment? Board, are we ready? Anybody? Motion's in order.
I move to determine that blanket purchase order number eighty-three hundred is a purchase of equipment and services pursuant to NRS three thirty-two point one-one-five subsection one, C, and D, and is therefore not suitable for public bidding, and to approve BPO eighty-three hundred, a request for the purchase of security monitoring and maintenance of Carson City's security systems from Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc., for a not-to-exceed cost of fifty thousand dollars to be funded from the Contractual Service and Building Repair Fund as provided in fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Motion by Supervisor Brinkowski, second by Supervisor McKenna on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posnay, carried unanimously. Okay. Let's take up thirteen E, similar concept.
Right, this is the purchase of computers, software, and hardware. John Wilkinson's here. I just wanted to clarify, the reason why we're bringing forward so many of these purchase orders and blanket purchase orders is we've been tasked to check on any kind of expenditures over fifty thousand by a single vendors. So any type of expenditures over fifty thousand to a single vendor, we're coming to you as the board for approval for these expenditures so that we're in compliance with NRS. And this is a purchase order for software and hardware for the various firms on the purchase orders. John's here, if you have any questions on the specific purchases. This is for citywide purchases for all the computer and equipment that they use for maintenance and repair and installation for existing computer, hardware, and software.
Good morning, this is John Wilkinson, IT Director. There are a handful of firms that we end up doing a lot of business with every year. Mostly, this is a series of small purchases, and the problem is they add up to an amount that's over fifty thousand dollars. So we've been asked to do blanket POs and then purchase everything under those blanket POs. One of these, for instance, is a blanket PO for a company called Pacific States, and it's a fifty thousand dollar PO. What we do with Pacific States is, is they do wiring for the city. We don't do our own low voltage wiring, our network wiring. When we have something that needs to be done, we call Pacific States. They recently did the new courtroom. They finished up about a month ago, the senior center. The senior center wiring was around ten thousand dollars. All of it had to be replaced because it was old wiring on their old phone system. They're now on a new phone system with current network wiring. So the amount, we don't know that we'll hit fifty thousand this year, we probably won't, but we might. And rather than have to come to the board for approval, which is going to delay it, delay it substantially, we've come asking for a blanket PO. What kind of delays am I talking about? Well, we had a request maybe ten days ago to get a wireless access point, one of those things installed, it's in front, in front of you guys, but in front of me too, right there in the middle. That's how we get all the wireless around in the city. We had a request for one of those to be installed in the sheriff's report room, and within three or four days, it was done. And that's kind of the schedule that we work on with a lot of this stuff. So Pacific States is one example. There's one company we've been dealing with for a decade called Insight, and that's the biggest of all of these. It's two hundred thousand dollars annually. We still, we're not required to go through competitive bidding process, but what we do with Insight is we will ask them, they've got a huge operation, and they deal with all the vendors, and we go to Insight and ask them to get bids from, let's say it's computers, go get a bid from Dell, go get a bid from HP, get a bid from Lenovo. So they ask internally, and they get their vendors competing against each other. So some of this is done without bid, but a lot of it, we're still comparing prices. The Insight contract, or the Insight transactions over the last sixteen months, we've done a hundred and fifty some odd transactions with them. Over a hundred of those are under a thousand dollars. So there's a lot of small stuff. Someone needs a monitor, someone needs a video card, we need to buy one of those things. So the advantage of having these blanket POs is it allows us to respond pretty quickly.
Are the total amount budgeted?
No, sir, because these are, these are actually...
They're blanket amounts, but I mean...
They're budgeted in the various accounts for the different departments.
Right. Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I was going to address the same thing. These are not pre-designated orders, they're not to exceed purchase orders, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So when we get to the point of making a motion, there's some language that I want to add to clarify that these are not to exceed amounts.
So just clarification, the Insight Public Sector is probably a company related to Insight, which I go into the website if I need computer memory or USB devices, that sort of thing, and order it. They charge my credit card and send it to me. Same type of procedure for this Insight? Yes, sir.
Why so many different open POs? Why can't it be just one? Why do you have so many if it's open? Can you have, must you have so many? Just curious.
Because we get different things. Pacific States does wiring, we have one for a company called Evolve, we get some consulting services from Evolve, we also buy some Cisco gear from them. There's one company in here, CVE or Cash Valley Electric, that they specialize in Cisco telephone systems. So some Cisco outlets don't have that specialty, others do. So, and sometimes we have these vendors competing against each other as well.
If I can add something for the record, Nick Provigendi, Finance Director. Each PO is for a different company, so we're asking you, we're asking you to, basically what, what the IT department does is they spend, we think they're going to spend over fifty thousand dollars with each company throughout the year, so we're asking you to approve these amounts. It's basically an internal control issue. We're kind of clamping down on these, you know, if we spend more than a certain amount with a certain company, we have to go to the board in order for you guys to approve them. So that's, that's basically what these are. I mean, these are day-to-day computer operations that they're going to end up, we think are going to spend more than fifty thousand dollars with each company. So that's why we're just coming to you and asking you to approve these, so we don't have to come, come to you with every, with every purchase, basically. It's just kind of a day-to-day operation that we anticipate that they're going to spend, you know, more than the amount required by NRS to get approval, and they all are budgeted too. So it's just an internal control issue. We just, you know, the board is required to approve amounts over fifty thousand with each vendor, and that's basically what we're doing.
And is there, do we have a strategy on the life cycle and the replacement of existing equipment such as we're doing today? We do have that in place, is that correct?
We do have that in place. We try to keep computers refreshed over the course of five years, which is stretching a little bit, and right now we probably have about fifty or sixty that are a little older than that. Network gear goes a little longer, anything we buy from Cisco, and we buy a lot of Cisco stuff. It's going to be seven years at least from the time we buy it before it's obsolete. And you have approved replacement of a phone system, a couple of phone system servers this year. We're going to be asking for replacements for switches, of which we've got about thirty-five big network switches next year. In the year after that, we're going to be replacing routers. This is based on the obsolescence cycle that Cisco has.
And on the funding sources, it says various department budgets will be impacted.
Yes, sir.
Is that citywide? Do we know what departments?
Yes, sir. Not in advance, and I wasn't clear, and I apologize for that, when I said unbudgeted, there, these are, much of this is not in the IT budget. Departments will, will tell us, we need a couple of computers, we've got a new employee, we need a phone put in, we have a new office that's getting built, we need wiring done. And so the departments are paying for it, and it is funded in the department's budgets.
Based upon city departments and their needs, they will be tracked, monitored, and then billed to their account, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So it's citywide, it could be, basically.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Provigendi, could I ask you to address Supervisor Brinkowski's concern about the not-to-exceed amount? From what I understand is, just like the sheriff's department needs a new router, they call IT, IT gets the router and puts it in, the sheriff's department's budget is charged for it.
That's correct. That doesn't really have anything to do with this purchase order? So you're going to, you're going to say that we can't spend more than fifty thousand dollars with Insight Public Sector, so we're not going to spend more than fifty thousand dollars with that vendor? It just depends on what John's going to buy from that vendor. If we see that we're going to spend more than fifty thousand dollars with that purchase order, then we're going to come back to you and have you approve another purchase order with that vendor. So it's just, all this is, is simply an internal control issue. You know, it's, you know, we're just, it's our day-to-day operations that we're buying, I mean, we buy computer, hardware, and software every day for somebody, and we just can't spend more than fifty thousand dollars with one vendor. And that's why we're getting you to approve these purchase orders. If we see that we're going to, basically every month, we're doing a listing of how much we spend with each vendor, and we're going to keep track of those amounts, and to make sure that if we, if we see that we're going to go over that amount for that vendor, then we'll come back to you and have you approve another purchase order. It's just, it's just part of the system.
So a purchase order, so a purchase order is a not-to-exceed amount...
Correct.
...by definition?
Correct.
The other thing is, is that why doesn't the sheriff get the purchase order?
Well, because it's, the, well, it's easier for us to do it. It's easier for us to have a blanket purchase order because basically John buys all the computer equipment. I think we kind of rely on John's expertise as, as the IT director to buy the computer equipment versus the sheriff, or Kathy Heath, or his folks. So basically, if he needs something that's computer-related, he'll call John, and John, because John knows what to buy, that, you know, and the best, you know, and the best issues or items for the city. That's my take, anyway.
And this is a standard business practice?
Yes.
When was the last time something similar like this has been brought to the board? I'm just curious, if you can recall. If not, I'm fine with it, too.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to go forward with these and make sure that all of our internal control systems are, are correct and current. So we haven't had any issues, we haven't had any audit issues in the past with these. I'm not saying that we've done everything perfectly, but we're trying to make sure that we're following the statutes and following our policies, so.
Thank you.
Public comment? Anybody? Seeing none. Board, Brad, you want to make a motion? So we'll go.
First, a comment. The language that goes into a motion is there to direct staff and for the purposes of providing clarity for people to go back and look at that item from the future. So I understand what John is saying and what Nick said, but I would still like to add the not-to-exceed language, so here's my motion. I move to determine that purchase order numbers twenty fifteen dash twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are purchase requests for software, hardware, and associated peripheral equipment and devices for computers, therefore not suitable for public bidding pursuant to NRS three-three-two point one-one-five subsection one, G, and H, and to approve purchase order numbers twenty fifteen dash twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six for not-to-exceed amounts to be funded from various operating supply accounts in various funds as provided in fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Comfortable with that?
We are, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion in a second. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posnay, carried unanimously. Okay. All right. And the reason I ask if we're comfortable, from an internal controls point of view, I want to make sure that, we know, I understand, Supervisor Brinkowski makes a good point, John makes a good point, just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing what's right from the internal side of things, internal control. Okay, all right. Kim Bell, Kim.
This is for the Board Supervisor to approve contract fourteen fifteen one-on-one, a contract to HDR, Inc., for water facilities plan update. HDR responded to RFP that we had released last year, and they're on our list for water and sewer professional services. So this is a contract to provide those services, and Darren's here to talk about the project if you have specific questions.
Good morning again, Mr. Schultz.
Good morning, Darren Schultz, Public Works for the Record. What we're doing here is, is an update to our water facility plan. These updates happen at various times, sometimes they can go longer than others, every few years to up to every seven years, you probably don't want to go much above that. Basically, what it does is it looks at our, our demand for water around the city, and then also our sources of water around the city, and balances that out, gives us some direction in the future as to what we need to be looking at, what infrastructure needs to be built, what we need to be thinking about as far as water demand and production. And so we have selected HDR to do this. One of the big changes from the last time we did an update was we now have water coming in from South Counties, South County, and so obviously that's going to change our overall plan that we couldn't account for last time we did a plan update. So that's a big change. I'm open to questions. HDR is also here if you have technical questions about what they're going to provide.
Supervisor Shirk, then Supervisor Brinkowski.
First, I'd like to comment on the Exhibit A in the package, very descriptive of what this entails, very informative, so I do appreciate that. I did, I don't know if I forwarded this question to you, and if I didn't, I apologize. In the subject... In the subject title, it has an amount not to exceed 130,400, and in the funding source, we have, there's 105,000 in that budget? And there's the discrepancy between those two?
Yes, that particular line item that has 105,000 remaining in it, this contract's going to cost 130,000. So, what we will do for something like this is we will augment that line item from another line item that we have extra money in to make up the difference. The bottom line on our budget doesn't go over, so we're just, we're moving from one to the other. That's how we're making up the difference. What happens when we put together our budgets in early spring, late winter, is for something like this, we, we're guessing at what this may cost or, and, and we have to put a number in that line item, and we, we don't know. So, we're, we're guessing at it. And then, when we get through and, and work at everything that needs to be included, we come up with something and we have to judge that. Now, in other cases, we overestimate and we don't spend that line item. There's money remaining there, so that's what we would do in this case is, is move that to here. Overall, our budget doesn't, doesn't go up.
Thank you.
Darren, are there any other anticipated expenditures from this line item budget for the balance of the year?
None anticipated.
Thank you.
Darren. It's my understanding that this is a requirement to update this plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to be facetious and ask you to tell me which one of these ones has an overestimate rather than underestimate, but that's all right. I got you. I know what you're doing. All right. Public comment?
There's many of them, Mayor. There's many.
All right, all right. Public comment? Any? Don't see any. Board, Supervisor Ray Bell.
I move to approve contract number 1415-101 pursuant to NRS 332.115 subsection 1B and NRS 625.530 with HDR Inc. to provide professional services for the Water Facilities Plan Update in an amount not to exceed 130,400 to be funded from the Water Professional Services account as provided for in fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Motion, a second. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. It would have been my intention to, to take, because I know we've got bond counsel here, and I, I'm also sensitive to the fact that they cost money to be here. So, you know, I, I, I think I'd like to see if I can get through the next, those items on the bond, and then we'll take a break, and we'll see. And if it, because it looks like it's going to go on, then we'll do something in the middle of this, but, okay.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Nick Provinti, Finance Director. We're asking you to approve on first reading an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors authorizing the issuance of its Carson City, Nevada, General Obligation Limited Tax Infrastructure Sales Tax Bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues Series 2014-F for the purpose of financing infrastructure projects for the city, and then, and then the various other issues. I, I did have some questions, and I did have some clarifications. On the Board Action Form, the funding source is not correct. The funding source should be the 1A cent sales tax, money that we're collecting from the infrastructure tax that started on October 1st, and the, the physical impact amounts are basically 786,000 for 30 years. It's roughly 23.5 million if you include, you know, you know, interest, principal, and all, and all the closing costs. And, and again, we do have, you know, the whole team is here, you know, our legal and financial team, so there's some brilliant minds back there. If you have any questions, I'm sure they'll, they'll be glad to answer them.
Supervisor Ray Bell.
I have a disclosure before we get going on this. I want to disclose that I own a business at ADELS and might financially benefit or be injured by the corridor project, and where the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation on behalf of all the citizens of Carson City will not be materially affected by the possible risks or benefits the corridor projects might have upon my financial interest in ADELS. And if there are any financial risks or benefits to my interest in ADELS, they are no greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter, and therefore, I can and will lawfully consider, participate, and vote in this matter pursuant to NRS 281A.420.
On first reading, public comment?
Bill number is 117.
Board, motions in order if we want.
Sorry, I had a question.
Public comment? Is this public comment?
Yeah, that first.
Oh, go.
Morning, Mayor, Board. Morris White, for the record. I just need a couple of clarifications, I guess, about some of the language in this document. If you'll go to Article 1, Section 102P on the definitions, J and K, the cost of any properties, rights, easements, or other interests in properties, or licenses, privileges, agreements, and franchises. K, the cost of demolishing, removing...
Excuse me, Mr. White, what page are you on?
Page eight.
Say it again?
Page eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, uh, section P.
Section P.
Right. Section P, on page eight. And then, K, the cost of demolishing, removing, and relocating any of the buildings, on, 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 and on there. Throughout this entire discussion, and in all of these documents describing the project, the project overview, the plan of expenditure, and the cost summary, I haven't seen any discussion regarding the purchase of any buildings or demolishing, so I'm, I'm wondering what buildings or properties are we talking about, or, or why is this language in there?
Well, I suspect I know the answer to that is that this is safety language, but, because, but, do you want to answer that? Come on in.
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard. I'm part of bond counsel to the city. Just as the mayor stated, that language comes from the definition of a cost of a project under Nevada law, in the local government securities law, and it doesn't dictate what this money will actually be spent on. It just has the full comment of what may be used for the cost of the project.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you. If you go to page 11, item KK, down at the bottom, it says, "Fledged revenues include income derived from any additional sales tax imposed by the city." It likes to include in the additional tax and pledged revenues. So, is that to say that at some point in time, you would be able to use monies over and above the 1/8 of a cent sales tax?
No.
Has been approved for this?
No.
I mean, that leaves it...
Unless, unless there's another motion to go, but the answer's no. We can answer that.
Unless there's another motion to, to do that?
Right. I mean, this is, this is, this is bond language, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
In Article 4, on page 41, Section 403 refers to Section 401B. I haven't found a Section 401B. Section 401 is directly above this, but I don't find a B anywhere in this document. Can we clarify where we're at there?
For the record, Ryan Henry again from Sherman &amp; Howard. I'd just like to put on the record that 401B is, is really meant to refer to Section 401, which creates the acquisition account, and that's an inadvertent typo there that we may be able to read into any motion.
Thank you. Article 7, page 71, Section 1201, in the sixth line, it refers to Paragraph 4 of Section 103B. I find Section 103 on page 13. I don't find a 103B, nor do I find a Paragraph 4. Can we have a clarification on that?
Got a minute, Ryan?
That reference, instead of 103B, it should actually be 103D.
And Paragraph 4?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like we need some internal site stuff here. Go ahead. It's all right. I got you.
Yeah, I, I think it should be referencing just simply Section 103D.
No Paragraph 4.
No Paragraph 4, Mayor.
Thank you. Also there on page 71, this is amendment to the instrument. There at the top, in the fourth line, it refers to asking 66% of the owners of these bonds to change the bonds. On page 72, in Section 1204, makes the same statement as to who'd ask permission to change the bonds. Section 1205, also 66% of the bond owners. Nowhere in here do, do I see it refer to coming back to the citizens that are going to pay for this bond to change the bond. When, when would you come back to the citizens to discuss changing the bond?
Well, I think it's a two-step maneuver, Morris. I mean, you have to, you have to, one, do a motion if we're going to refinance these bonds or retire them, that comes back to us. And then, second, when that motion goes out, in order to effectuate that, you have to have approval of your bondholders because their security interest. So, that's what's going on. So, it's a two-step mover. One, it comes here, then it goes to them. You have to have approval of both in order to do it.
So, that's when you refund.
Right.
I didn't see anything in here about refunding, so that just all folds into the same thing?
Refunding is selling it. That's essentially what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't mean to step on your toes on that, but I think that's what's going on, correct? All right, all right. Other public comment? Board, motions in order.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 117, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, authorizing the issuance of its Carson City, Nevada, General Obligation Limited Tax Infrastructure Sales Tax Bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues Series 2014-F for the purpose of financing infrastructure projects for the city, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, and the general tax proceeds and the revenues pledged for the payment of such bonds, ratifying action previously taken towards issuing the proposed bonds, providing other matters related thereto, and providing the effective date hereof with two corrections, one on page 41 of the document, in Section 403 under Article 4, to change Section 401B to 401. And on page 71 of the document, under Article 12, Section 1201, in line 6, to change that sentence so that it reads supplemental instrument excluding pursuant to Section 103 hereof any.
What I'm thinking about here is there should, well, on discussion of the motion, I agree with the motion in its entirety. I think that, that my, my request would be, after this motion passes, that there be an internal review, an internal reference review, period, so. And if there's something that is substantive that needs to be brought back, we bring it back here. But otherwise, if it's an internal reference issue, I think the motion's fine for me. So, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, comment, I'm sorry, Jim. Didn't mean, I didn't see it.
Before it comes to the vote of the board, I would like to state that I will not vote in favor of this. I believe these projects, as I stated before, can be funded through redevelopment and other resources. I do not think we needed to create a new tax to, to fulfill the obligation that we have towards the city. So, I will not be voting in favor of this.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay?
Nay.
Okay. We'll now take up Item 14B, the VNT refunding.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for the record, Nick Provinti, Finance Director. We're asking you to approve on, on first reading an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors designated by the short title of the 2014 E.VNT Historical Refunding Bond Ordinance. So, basically, what we're asking you to do is we're, we're asking you to refund, we're planning on refunding the 2005B bonds. We're anticipating cash flow savings of about 831,643 dollars with a present value savings of about 728,500 or so. We're anticipating selling these bonds on December 2nd, so these amounts could vary a little bit depending on what the market is doing. So, if there's any questions?
Does that affect the month? Does that affect the, I mean, the ref, okay. I think I got it. I answered my question. Supervisor Monkowski.
Nick, two questions. This item came in front of us maybe four to six weeks ago.
Correct.
And we tabled it because, on the recommendation of bond counsel, because there was limited interest in purchasing the bonds, potentially the interest rates weren't where we wanted to see them. What has changed?
I can probably have John come and ask, answer that question for you.
Thank you. For the record, John Peterson with J&amp;A Consulting Group, we're financial advisor on the proposed bonds. Supervisor Monkowski, it's an excellent question. Yes, back in September, we came to the board. Originally, we had proposed refinancing these 2005B bonds. The savings at the time kind of comparatively were in the, the $300,000 to $400,000 range based on where interest rates are at the moment. And again, they're, they're, they are still subject to change, as Nick pointed out. We won't have a commitment to purchase these bonds expected until December 2nd, but we're expecting savings, as Nick pointed out, about 830,000 total cash flow savings, or when you discount those for present value in the 600, or, excuse me, $730,000 range. So, we think, again, based on where interest rates are, this is a much better outcome than where we were in September, and again, are recommending that the board authorize us to go out and to refinance these, these bonds.
What's a bank loan versus?
Yeah, one, one, the, the method of sale back in September was what we call a bank loan or a private placement, so a single investor would purchase that. These are publicly offered bonds, so these would be available to anyone who wanted to buy Carson City obligations.
Maybe staff could answer this question. I know you've done it in the past as well, Nick, but the bonds mature in 2026, and who oversees the spending of these funds as they're collected? Where do they go and how are they spent? If you could just briefly, I'm sorry to labor on it.
Well, basically, what happens is we, we've issued the bonds, so we collect the tax from the 1A cent sales tax. It goes into a fund, and we use that money, we transfer it over to the debt service fund, and then the treasurer will pay the principal and interest on the bonds, basically.
The money's been spent. I mean, the project's been built.
Right.
That's what it's getting.
Right, that's correct. So, so basically, when, what we'll do is we'll get this money, and we'll use that money to pay off the old bonds, and then we'll have new bonds that will use the 1A cent sales tax that we get from the VNT 377B monies.
But hopefully, this will reduce the amount.
Just a refunding.
This will reduce the amount that...
That's correct. We're anticipating, yeah, the interest rates will be lower, so the actual principal and interest amounts will be lower that we're paying.
Somewhere between, anywhere, it looks like.
About 50,000 a year.
About 50,000.
35,000, 50,000 a year, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Monkowski.
And Nick, just for, for further clarification, this does not extend the maturity date...
That's correct.
...of the original bond issuance.
That's correct. It's purely a cash, it's purely a savings, an interest rate savings.
Who wants to make a motion to save 700,000 over the next 12 years? All right. You agree with that? Oh, Supervisor Monkowski, all right, go.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 118, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, designated by the short title, 2014 E.VNT Historical Refunding Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of its Carson City, Nevada, General Obligation Limited Tax VNT Historical Limited Tax VNT Historical Refunding Bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2014 E, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of annual general ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bonds, additionally securing their payment by a pledge of revenues derived from certain sales tax imposed by the city, and providing other matters related thereto.
Second.
Motion in second. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carry, unanimous. We'll take up one last item, and we'll get, take a short break here. On the report of funds, Nick.
It's just the...
Anybody have any question with respect to the monthly report of receipts and expenditures? Board members, public, anybody? Do I need a motion? We need a motion to accept.
I'll make it.
Motion.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through October 28, 2014, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion, second. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carry, unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll be in recess for about 10 minutes.[672.23]
Bring the meeting back to order. We're now going to take up item 15A. This is a potential change of name of Custer Circle to Copper Springs Court. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are we doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Go for it.
Tom Grindy with Carson City Public Works.
You bet, Tom.
And this item is to change the name of private street off Kings Canyon Road from Custer Circle to Copper Springs Court. And this issue came to light when we were looking at changing the addresses on that private road to help the emergency response. And we mentioned to one of the neighbors that we were going to change their address, and they were like, "We don't want an address on Custer Circle." So we said, "Well, let's come up with a name everybody could agree to." And that's -- they suggested Copper Springs Court. It reflects the history of the area and the geology of the area.
Okay.
People either liked that name or didn't really care. As far as I've heard, nobody's objected to it. So that's what we'd like to do, is change the name.
Police and fire -- police are okay, fires okay?
Yep.
Public comment? Anybody here from Custer Circle or Copper Springs? Anybody? Okay. Notice has gone out on this already?
Yes.
All right. Supervisor Shirk.
I just want to comment, thank you for including that map, showing where this street is. Things like that are so helpful, and I really do appreciate it. I personally don't like the name, but I don't really matter, so.
Thank you. All right. I don't know what happened to General Custer either, but that's okay.
I do.
You do?
He wasn't a general.
Oh, what was he? What was Custer?
No, he called himself. He was a general during the Civil War, and he was demoted back down to a major or a colonel when he died.
Okay. Fascinating, and excited to get into the minutia here. Supervisor Bonkowski, go.
I move to change the name of Custer Circle to Copper Springs Court.
Motion second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous. Thanks, Tom. Okay. All right, and let's do the Collard Ranch. Issues coming up, 15B. This is the Kings Canyon Creek Rotation Agreement and the Ash Canyon Rotation Agreement. We have these periodically. I know we've got Mr. Scott in the audience too, so tell us what's going on here, why we need to renew and go forward.
Very good. Darren Schultz, Public Works for the record. 15B and 15C are very, very closely related. It's the same issue that we're bringing before you, although it reflects two different creeks, the Kings Canyon Creek, 15B. And what we're doing here is an allotment of that creek water goes to the Anderson Collard Ranch. And the city, for a number of many years, has participated with the Collard-Anderson Ranch in sharing that water. And the agreement is that we typically will take more than they do of their allotment, so we have to set up an agreement so that we can buy it from them. We do most of the taking more of during the winter months when they can't irrigate their ranch, and so that's when it's more beneficial for the city to take that water. And at that time, we pay them, we have to compensate them. So we put together these agreements, they're typically three to five years long, to try and set up a compensation schedule. And I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Brad, then John, and then I didn't see if Jim's light was on.
Darren, what happens if we don't come to an agreement with the Collards and Andersons, or if we, for some other reason, lose the water?
What happens is that we -- if we don't have this creek water, then we basically will up what we're doing pumping from well water. And to augment, I mean, we still have enough water, it's just we turn pumps on and pump more on the west side. We can do that, we can accomplish our goal. The downside with that is it's more expensive water to do it that way, and it's also not as good water tasting. So we prefer to use creek water whenever we can.
Thank you for answering my next two questions without me asking.
There I go again.
Just as curiosity, looks like there's about 94.9% between Carson City and the ranch owning of the annual flow. Who owns the rest of it?
The rest of it, that was another question that came in early, I believe, from Supervisor Shirk. The rest of that water belongs to various residents' ranches up on the west side, little portions of it that they can use. And there's a number of them.
The other thing is, is this contract's denominated in gallons of water? I don't know if I've ever seen that before. Usually it's acre feet?
It's often acre feet. It just depends on Anderson Collards like to deal with gallons.
Public comment? Okay, then we'll take a motion on 15B. Supervisor Rayboud.
I move to approve the Kings Canyon Creek Rotation Agreement with Anderson Collard Ranch Enterprises LLC to allow city possible use of portion of Kings Canyon Creek flows.
Motion second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous on 15C. We've had a little bit of history about it. Anything you want to add? Anything on ownership?
The only thing I might add on 15C, and it was brought up by Supervisor Bonkowski, is the difference in cost of the water. And it's just more for information, one being slightly higher than the other. And that just comes from many, many, many years ago, the value in these creeks, the value of the water was higher in one because of its location to the other. That's carried through the years. It doesn't have a lot of relevance now, but at the same time, that cost is slightly higher from one to the other. But that's how it got started, that's where it's at. The value to the city is for both creeks, because they come together. It's basically the same, but we're on board, it's the right, it's a reasonable cost to be paying for it. The other thing that we do with these two creeks is the water that comes down from Marlet, a lot of times, especially at the beginning of the year, that water's not, it's murky, a lot of minerals in it, dirty. We'll take that water, and the Collards are nice enough to take that water for the ranch, and we get the more clear creek water, which is easier to treat. And so it's really a win-win agreement for us and the Collard-Anderson Ranch.
Darren, in this agreement, there are two methods of compensation. One's monetary, and one is replacement of the water. Can you briefly just put on the record how the water compensation would work?
The water compensation would work, and I refer to it as we will, we would take, for the city's part, we could take water that comes down off of East Slope-Marlet water, and give that to the ranch, and trade them for some of their creek water. It would just be a trade of water from one to the other.
And is that decision made in the biannual meetings?
It is.
Thank you.
How much are we paying for Minden Water?
I want to say it's, right now, it's on an escalating scale. I want to say it's pretty close to 70 cents per thousand, maybe, 75, 75, something, right in there.
Thousand gallons, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Public comment? We ready, Board? Supervisor Rayboud, you want to do it?
I move to approve the Ash Canyon Creek Rotation Agreement with Anderson Collard Ranch Enterprises LLC to allow city possible use of a portion of Ash Canyon Creek flows.
Motion second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up the state engineer water applications. These are notices given to us as to whether or not we want to get in and object. Bruce, you here? I understand, or Darren, these, we don't really have a, well, go ahead and tell me.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board. Bruce Scott, with Resource Concepts, your water guy. This is a public hearing. I'm sorry, that was at the Schultz height. Now you're -- Thank you, Darren. This is a mandated public hearing for you to take action, to make a recommendation to the state engineer regarding water changes that cross county lines. In this case, it's water that has the potential to come from Douglas County to Carson City. Your action today is an advisory, will be an advisory recommendation to the state engineer. What we have here, this is the third round of changes that we have filed as part of the Minden Water Supply Project with the agreements among Douglas County, Indian Hills, Town of Minden, and Carson City. This group of applications has no Carson City water in it. All of Carson City's water in the Carson Valley has previously been transferred, except what we are currently using in a couple of active city wells. So everything we have available to move to Minden has been moved. That was the first round, and a little bit in the second round. This third round is Indian Hills water, as well as Douglas County East Valley water. The reason that it involves Carson City is because all of the water permits that we have transferred under this regional project include Carson City as a part of the service area, not just Douglas County or the Carson Valley portion of Douglas County. So the intention is to be very flexible with the water rights that are in Minden Wells, so that not only Carson City's water, but other water permits could conceivably have a place of use that includes the Carson City urban area. It does not technically include the Lyon County area. Carson City and Lyon County have other water rights that include that. So with that, there's a series of applications here. Some of them are Douglas County, some of them are Indian Hills. In response to a question that came up during the week, there's about 861 acre feet of water that is in Douglas County ownership now, being transferred to the Town of Minden. And there's about 3,400 acre feet in Indian Hills ownership that will be transferred to the Town of Minden. There's some supplemental rights in there, so those aren't absolute totals, but the transfers on their face, if you add them up, total those approximate numbers. So I'm happy to answer questions or provide more detail. The recommendation is that you have public comment, and then make your determination, and hopefully recommend to the state engineer that these applications be approved. Douglas County Commissioners have heard these and already made that recommendation.
Okay. Public comment? Anybody? Know what's going, everybody know what's going on here? Good. All right. Board, back. Supervisor Rayboud.
I move to recommend that the Nevada State Engineer approve water applications 83703, 83992, 83993, 83994, 83995, 83996, 83997, 83998, 83999, 84000, 84001, 84002, 84092, 84093, 84094, 84095, 84096, 84097, 84098, 84099, 84100, 84101, 84102, 84092, 84093, 84094, 84095, 84096, 84097, 84098, 84099, 84100, 84101, 84102, 84104, 84105, 84106, 84107, 84108, 84109, 84110, 84111, 84112, 84113, 84114, 84115, 84116, 84117, 84118, and 84119, to allow water to be delivered across county lines and between hydrographic basins.
Did we check the internal references on those? All right. On the motion, thanks Karen for reading all those out. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bruce, for your help.
Thank you. I'm sorry to put all those numbers in there. Thank you very much.
You bet. All right. Let's take up Parks and Rec.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and start. Stacy Geomi, Fire Chief. I just wanted to give a quick rundown of where we are and why we're where we are. A little less than a year ago, the Board was contemplating approving the current site of the 911 Steel I Beam as its permanent site. Several of the Board members indicated that maybe we should explore some other possibilities and look for ways to do that with a little more flair. Maybe that's a strong word, but certainly with a little more respect than it deserves. So we put together committee of the folks you see sitting at the table, along with a few other people. We approached this from the perspective of trying to do it, not only it justice, but to look at consolidating the memorials that are in Mills Park. We've got a memorial for the events that happened on Eagle Station Lane. We've got the Firefighters Memorial, which is the statewide memorial. And then we have the Steel I Beam. And so we're here today to you to approve the conceptual design primarily, and the permanent, what we hope you'll agree will be the permanent location for the Steel I Beam into a very nice memorial section of what is one of our jewels, Mills Park. So I'm going to turn it over to Darren Berger, who is surprised. I'm going to turn it over to Darren Berger, who's going to go through the designs and how we got to where we were.
Okay. For the record, Darren Berger, I'm an architect here in Carson City. I was thinking Vern was going to introduce me, so sorry, I caught a little off guard. Anyways, in last February 2014, we were approached by Parks and Rec, Fire, and the Police Department to take a look at the existing memorial and share some ideas about how we can make the permanent home a little bit better than how it exists right now. When architects are asked to do that kind of thing, we have a thing, it's called a charrette, gather up our markers, our fodder, we get together with the stakeholders and just start sharing some ideas. Questions, or what we looked at is, we took a look at some of the memorials that have been done across the country, kind of got some inspiration and ideas from those. And we asked ourselves, you know, is this really the best location to locate the beam? This is where, this is what it looks like right now. And then some of the other goals that we tried to identify were, we thought we needed a greater area for public gatherings and ceremonies, obviously. On September 11th, this is a very important place to be. We talked about needing a place just for people to come and sit and kind of, you know, on a daily basis to contemplate, you know, what had happened that day. And then also, as Stacy pointed out, just connecting with some of the other memorials that are on the site, the IHOP and the Firefighters Memorial are the two that we're trying to connect with. So next slide, please. So we're in Mills Park. We're here right now. And right now, the memorial's right there. I tell you, I cannot keep this straight. No, I --
I think we know where we are.
Yeah, right there. And then what we're looking at right now is this location right here. So next slide, please. This is a zoom in of it. Again, there's the context. We're looking at this spot right here, again. And this is what we're proposing to do. And then, next slide. These are, this just talks about some of our design goals and thoughts and ideas. Of course, as part of this memorial, we're trying to capture, you know, what had happened that day. There was the North and the South Towers, which fell. There's the Pentagon, and there's the Flight 93 that went down in Pennsylvania. There's also a story about a survivor tree, the Calery pear tree. And the notion of time, and I think this is what really resonated with me, is we all remember where we were and what we were doing on that day. So this notion of time is very important to me, to capture just, you know, what we were doing that day in this timeframe, when the North Tower fell, and the South Tower, and the Pentagon, and the Flight. So just quickly looking at this, so towers, they are right here, and they are fallen, they are fallen over. And that's the two sides of this walkway here, and you'll see it in some of these other images. The Pentagon shape captures the idea of the Pentagon. Then you have this internal Pentagon shape, and that's where I envision setting our steel beam. And that steel beam, I envision setting it on a pile of rubble, you know, just like, you know, you would have found it on that day, just this building and pile of rubble. And of course, in front of that would be a plaque that talks about what had happened that day. And then the Flight 93 is kind of captured in the gnome that sits out here, that keeps track of, it'll be a vertical element, kind of in an airfoil shape, so it captures the notion of that plane flight, but it also casts a shadow on the ground, and it'll capture that moment in time. Every year, it's a sundial, and we'll do something significant within that shadow in that timeframe that memorializes that day and time. And again, providing a gathering place, this is that concrete area where we can gather. Next, please. And again, there are some benches on either side that you'll see in the next slide, where you can sit and take in the beam. Next, please. And connecting with other memorials, we're proposing to move the IHOP Memorial here, from, it's over on this side. And then also connecting with the Firefighters Memorial here. And then, next slide, please. And then these are just some images to try to give you a better understanding of what we're proposing to do. So here's the fallen towers. That was, go ahead. Oh, sorry. So here's the towers, here's the IHOP Memorial here, here's a bench, here's where the beam is. There's a little plaque in front of it, talks about what had happened that day. And then here's the gnome that casts the shadow, that would start to talk about the timeframe when all this happened. Here's a plan view of it, and then a section through there. And that's it. Thank you.
So we, you know, part of our plan in here is where the Pentagon is, is to commemorate the victims of that day by placing their names on paver stones within there. And then, obviously, we need to raise private funds to do this work. And our estimate is $160,000 to do the work. And we're hoping that we can raise those funds by selling those. So we would propose to have a list of the victims. Maybe John is partial to someone in the military, he wants to go down the list, he could buy a name of a former military veteran, something like that. So, you know, that was kind of our goal, but we didn't want to take that step until we were sure that the Board was happy with the conceptual design and the location. I just want to thank Darren Berger, who is not only a great Carsonite for taking the time to do this, because he cares about our community, but he's really a talented individual. We threw ideas at him, and he grabbed every one of those ideas and turned them into what I think is a great little spot in Mills Park to contemplate not only 9/11, but the loss of our firefighters and the victims that suffered on Eagle Station. So Darren, my thanks to you and kudos. You did a great job. To date, we've been able to raise $7,000. So we've got a good foundation. I know that pales in comparison to the total amount that we need, but the Nevada Fire Chiefs Association has given 2,000, Carson City Firefighters and Chief Officers Association have each given 1,000, and the three sheriffs' office associations have each committed $1,000. So we're at $7,000 as we sit here today. So I just wanted to present that to you, and I guess we're here to answer any questions you might have.
What's the cost of the bricks?
We have to figure that out. You know, so maybe 100 bucks if you buy one brick, maybe 200 if you want a specific name. You know, if we can get just 160 people to give 1,000 bucks, we're there.
Okay.
It's kind of a joke.
I will take a firefighter and a police officer.
Thank you.
Stacy, there's various companies you can deal with, which you'll find out in the bricks. And I know we do this for the Greenhouse Project.
I'll come knock on your door.
You can. Thank you. And also, I want to commend you, Darren. Wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
One perhaps small item, but, you know, the IHOP Memorial consisted of just more than the old at least. There was a tree there that was particularly planted.
I'm sorry.
The tree that was, that's right by the IHOP Memorial.
Yeah.
I mean, that was.
Yeah. The plan is to move it holistically to its new location, so that tree would come with it.
Okay. All right. So there's no general fund money coming out of this?
Sure.
Well, you know, I mean, we're not here asking for money now, but we may ask for funds in our regular budgetary process. If the city doesn't have funds to give, or the Board chooses not to do that, we'll continue to raise private funds. I mean, we probably could have made this less expensive, but we really wanted to put together a memorial that paid tribute to everybody, and did it properly, and didn't cut corners, and didn't scrimp. You know, I don't think we spent as much money as we could have, but I think we did them justice. them justice, and I think that's the important thing for us. So we'll do the best we can to raise funds. Can we raise 160,000? I don't know, but we're going to give it a heck of a try.
Supervisor, sure.
I do want to mention that, sorry, I do want to mention that we brought Cecilia Myers in to protect and make sure that the IHOP is moved forward because she worked with that project before, at your recommendation, Mayor, so she will be working with this. And I just want to say, being in a room with all these gentlemen was really inspiring. I was really, I really felt honored to be a part of this, and you did a great job, and when you're ready, I'd like to make the motion, if I could.
In the explanation of impact, and it says, it expects half the cost of the memorial to be raised through a private donation, and the remaining funds will be requested during the city's fiscal year 15, 16 budget cycle. Talked to the city manager, as far as I'm concerned, I would rather have this project done than to sit there and languish waiting on fundraising. So perhaps the city can loan the money for it, and you can continue fundraising, that sort of thing.
I will say that, you know, I mean, I'll just commit to you that we will do our best to raise funds privately as we can, and I'll tell you that I started working on a spreadsheet by going through the 9/11 museum site where they have pictures and biography, small biographies of each of the victims. And I started this last week sometime, and I got through about 20 or 25 names, and I had to stop, because even now, I'm getting emotional, because it's just so moving to see how many lives stopped that day, just stopped, in such massive numbers. And it's very humbling to see those names. And I think it's very impactful to be able to put the names of those victims, whether someone buys a brick in their name or not, in that memorial. It's really something, so, thank you.
Public comment? Anybody? Motion, motion's in order. Supervisor, go.
I move to accept the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to approve a new permanent location south of the firefighters memorial, and approve a conceptual plan for the 9/11 World Trade Center memorial in Mills Park.
Motion second. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed nay, carried unanimous. Thanks, Darren, very much.
Thank you.
All right. Sheriff, you had a good comments. All right, let's take up possible appointment of Ms. Dorpansky to the hearing examiner. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. For the record, Susan Dorpansky, planning manager. So this item is to appoint me as a hearing examiner for the planning division. Currently, we only have one, Community Development Director Lee Plemmel. In the past, we have had several more, but through the reduction of the staff, we have, we were down to one. So this is really just to have me as a second examiner. Hearing examiners typically oversee the approval of administrative permits, which can be things like drive-through windows and things like that. So it's still a public hearing, it's just done in front of a hearing examiner instead of a full board. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? Public comment? Question?
We're going through our package, it shows that NRS says that you can be compensated for this role, but CCMC says that you cannot, right? So CCMC takes precedent. You're not going to receive any additional compensation.
No, no additional compensation.
Thank you.
Just additional headache. Gotcha. All right, well, thank you for taking it on. All right, anybody? Both motions in order. Supervisor Bunkowski.
I move to appoint Planning Manager Susan Dorpansky, AICP, as a hearing examiner pursuant to the qualifications outlined in Carson City Municipal Code Section 18.02.052 and NRS 278.263.
Motion, and a second on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed nay, carried unanimous. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We'll now open a public hearing to, regarding a proposed amendment to Carson City's Community Block Development Annual Action Plan, and to take action to open a 30-day public comment period regarding the proposed amendment from November 6, 2014 to December 5. Mr. Plemmel, the public hearing is now open on this matter, and I want you to explain what is going on here, so that we'll take any comments that we hear during the hearing.
Sure. For the record, Lee Plemmel, Community Development Director, and I'll just do a brief comment, you have a brief overview, you have the packet, but basically, it's Community Development Block Grant funds each year are allocated to various projects around the city for certain lower moderate incomes serving uses. The Fish facility on Janelle Drive, which they recently were grant, donated to them, was a property, including a building, that they're going to use for some of their services over there, and they received $20,000 approximately to do some upgrades to that building. There's been some discussions, as we've brought back to you, about a different project from Fish going on that site, so they don't want to necessarily put this money into that Janelle Drive site, so they would like to use it and transfer it to needed improvements to the Fish facility at Carson and Long Street. In order to change this, so annually, for the CDBG funds, you adopt the plan, the plan says they're going to use it for the upgrades on Janelle, so it requires this amendment to the plan in order to use those funds at the facility on Long Street, and we're going through the public hearing process to do that, which requires a 30-day public hearing comment period, and after which we'll come back to the board for final approval to make this change, if approved by the board.
Okay, it's the public hearing part, then we'll come back here in a minute. Public comments on this? Anybody? You don't have to, if you don't want to, Jim, go ahead, public hearing.
For the record, Jim Peckham, Executive Director of Fish. Just to add a little detail, for the most part, the money dedicated to Janelle, the thought was we'd use it to do ADA compliance things to the, one of the three buildings that were on the facility. We expected that we'd demolish two of them in working with Rural Housing. They've come up with a potential solution that might allow us to fund the remake of the entire property. In the past, we were working with HUD to maybe do a partial improvement to the particular property, but Rural Housing made us aware of a way to be able to get some funding to complete the project in one fell swoop. But they are currently recommending that if we move in that direction, that we're more likely to get that kind of funding if we demolish the entire property. So it didn't make sense to Fish to go and do ADA improvements to a building that we're more than likely going to demolish. If it doesn't turn out, that we'll proceed with Rural Housing, it'll be sometime in the April timeframe that we would know that, and then there wouldn't necessarily be enough time to be able to spend that money on that particular project and make those improvements. So in talking with the planning department, they said, hey, we've allocated money in the past to Fish, you've had other infrastructure projects, do you have anything outside of Janelle that you might be able to apply it to? And that's what brought us to this, to reallocate that money to other Fish projects.
Okay. Karen.
Lee, this question's for you, just because, for clarification purposes, it says that federal regulation and Carson City Participation Plan require a substantial amendment to the annual action plan, and if there's a change in the use of the CDBG funds. That being said, how much staff time is involved in dealing with this? Can you clarify that?
I meant to mention upfront that Janice Keeler, formerly Janice Broad, but Janice Keeler, recently married, is in the audience. She's a CDBG administrator, so if you have any more detailed questions about the program. So the staff time is putting together this amendment, the staff time, in terms of whether we use it in one location or another, is really, is really no change. The only staff time is posting the notices, we do have to publish this in the paper, complete the staff report. Janice had to write the amendment, the document, relatively short document that's in your packet. Do you want more detail on the hours, perhaps?
I just wanted to make sure that, in the amount of money that we're trying to shift, that, you know, it's just not more costly to have to deal with it because of the requirements involved with these agreements.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's not a significant burden to shift it. In fact, that's one reason why we have some policy limits on the amount of funding we want in any, in any given grant, which is $10,000, so that we're not spending more time than it's worth on a grant.
You'll get there, just don't come to Karen. The question for you, if the money was not used, then it rolls over into the next year's grant amount, correct?
Correct.
And if that were to happen, then we would not need the amendment. Is that correct? If the money is just going to roll over, then we don't need an amendment to the plan, only if we want to transfer it to another project.
Right. We only need the amendment to transfer it to another project. And I should say, back to the previous question, a substantial amendment, because it's moving location, we consider that substantial. It would also be, we generally use a 10% change in funding, more than a 10% change in funding for a project at a given location, would be a substantial amendment. But we could carry it over, it would, it would be available in the next year if that's, if you decided not to do this.
Okay. My concern is that we have a vetting system in place, including a citizens committee, to determine how these funds are allocated every year, and I'm very concerned about circumventing that system. I would rather see the funds roll over and have Fish reapply for the funds, since they would roll over, out of next year's grant funds. So that would be my preference, rather than us making the decision to change the location at this time.
Any other public comments or comments from the board? Okay. This is a public hearing, folks. Anybody? All right, then, we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll take a motion to open a 30-day comment period. Motion's in order.
I move to open a 30-day comment period from November 6, 2014 to December 5, 2014, regarding a proposed amendment to Carson City's Community Development Block Grant 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan.
Okay, on the motion, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify. No discussions in order.
As far as this goes, I have no problem with a 30-day comment period, I'd like to hear from people as to what they think. However, I do believe that Supervisor Bunkowski's suggestion that we roll this over until next year is a viable option also. I assume after a 30-day comment period, we can decide whether to continue forward with the amendment, or we can just leave things at status quo.
That's my understanding of the process. Supervisor Bunkowski. All right. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's take up the change in, potential change in the NNDAs metrics. Who wants to take this up?
Mr. Mayor, I'll tee it up, at least initially, I see that Danny Campos had just stepped out of the room from NNDAs.
Want to hold off on this? He's getting back here. Okay.
Okay, here he is.
I'm sorry, Danny, we're just, we're just taking this item up now, so. You can be, come up the podium, because the city manager's introducing it right now. Go ahead. Go.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the board-approved plan, or the board-approved agreement with NNDAs for them to not only do a survey of our existing manufacturers and seek to grow our existing manufacturing base, but the second year of the plan largely dealt with attracting new manufacturers to the area. Also, as part of that resolution, we were to come back to you with metrics that would give not only this board, but the public, the ability to gauge the effectiveness of that plan. So we've worked both with NNDAs over the past couple of months, and Danny Campos is here now to talk about both of those items.
Go ahead, Danny.
Okay, thank you.
Morning.
Mayor, supervisors. For the record, Danny Campos, Vice President, Business Development with the Northern Nevada Development Authority. And if I may, give new copies, can I approach to the...
Yeah. Please go to the close table. Okay, what's being handed out right now is basically just the revised edition, I just want to make sure that everyone did have exactly what I'll be going over today, and the documentation as well, for the job count as we get to it in the conversation here. But I'm assuming that everyone had, has had a chance to review the proposed plan metrics, and I'm open to all discussion, of course, and answer questions pertaining to those. But before we get to that, I wanted to touch briefly on the, if you look at page, well, the actual written plan, the first several pages that you have in front of you before you get to the timelines, this is the original document that was submitted for approval, along with the other two documents immediately following this. So if you go through this piece here and go back to the written format of the plan, you'll run into the timelines, and behind that, the written budget, for two-year budget by month. The written portion of it, the front portion, not the second two documents, was originally wasn't, what was intended to be presented to the board for approval, and at the fault of NNDAs, I'll take that on myself, but there were interior documents also included with that submittal, which was, number one, the metrics, the time metrics, and also the budget, the timeline and a budget. Those two documents are, we do this for every project that we do within NNDAs, and they're meant for the staff to follow these guidelines, timelines, budgets, so on and so forth. So there was a little confusion on what documents to follow at the time. However, that was cleared up, but I want to make certain that everyone understands that the written format, the first five pages here, is the actual document that was submitted for approval. And the reason I bring that up is because although the plan focuses on retention and expansion, for the most part, there is a portion of that plan that has recruitment. And in saying that, if you look at page two of the written format, action three, item E, the way it was originally submitted is basically that we'd be hiring research companies and consultants in California to assist with face-to-face meetings for the recruitment aspect of the plan. Below that, the original timeline was Q1 and Q4 of year one and year two. So because we want to move up, or we attended, anyway, we thought we had to move up one of the California trips to kind of coincide with the, I guess, the Tesla effect, what most people are calling it, to take advantage of some of the companies that are looking very heavily at the area, we wanted to make certain that we took one of these trips in the first quarter of the contract period in year one, which was already stipulated. But just for clarification, again, there was some confusion as to, if you look at the timelines, it was submitted as document two on this piece here today, it shows that trip being taken later on in the year. So with that said, we just want to make sure we have the board's approval to go through with the original plan on the written document in front of you. That's number one. And number two, after that, we want to talk about the metrics that are proposed in front of you, and I'm here to basically answer any of those questions. Now, the third part of this is I wanted to ask, basically, through a two-year plan like this, as everyone knows, things change. You know, three months from now, things can dramatically change from what they were when we originally put this plan together. Two years from now, that's even greater. So with that said, I want to see what process needs to be taken on NNDAs' part, that if we need to make minor changes or modifications to timelines, or moving the budget funds around, or whatever, what needs to be done, number one? Do I need to come back and present a new, a new approach or plan, or whatever the case is? But what we want to avoid is to have to come before the board, you know, dozens of times in the next two years for minor changes to this timeline and plan. So with that said, I'll leave it open to the supervisors and the mayor.
Hi, Danny. Hi Danny. A concern I have is that in sitting in the most recent Nevada Works meeting that I attended, various counties were represented, Lyon County being one of them, and of course, the great concern is that with Tesla coming, as you brought up, no one wants to be a sea of rooftops, therefore, they're all avidly going out to recruit business and industry to their areas. So to my way of thinking, it's a priority for us to emphasize that aspect of this agreement. Just my thought.
Okay. Danny, could you go into a little bit of an explanation too of how the recruitment trips work? Having gone on those as a volunteer on behalf of NNDAs, I just want people to be aware that not only do staff go, but you also take volunteers who pay their own way, travel costs, hotel costs, to go help in that endeavor. So could you kind of walk us through how those trade shows work?
Certainly, on the trade shows, are you speaking just the trade shows, or the California consultant visits as well?
Either or.
Okay, either, okay. Well, we'll start with the trade shows then. The way NNDAs functions is, we have groups and committees, we have investors, what we call, Chamber will call, members, and we also have leadership throughout the representative, throughout the region for your commercial real estate groups, your banking, finance, I mean, education, you name it. But the way it works is, NNDAs puts together a team, always going to be me and somebody else, or just me, and then we put out the plan. So in other words, to say, the MD&amp;M show, the manufacturer for medical devices in February in Anaheim every year. It's a huge show, we have a booth there every year, and we literally have to man that booth for three, three and a half days, but we have to have a team to do so. So what we do is, we put together teams, and we put the information out, we ask for volunteers, and the volunteers knowing that if they go, they're going to have to fit their own bill, room, board, travel, anything and everything that goes with that, and also be willing to take some of the shifts for covering that booth and so on and so forth. The idea behind all these, obviously, is to gain, you know, as many leads as possible for counties that we serve, and bring those back, work them, and basically get them over here. So in saying that, a lot of times, we'll take a team of a show like this, a team of 12 to 15 people, with only one, maybe two representatives of NNDAs, then you have the power company utilities represented, you have banking and finance represented, you have Carson City represented, Lyon County, and so on and so on and so on. And it's all voluntary, you know, we don't always have representatives from every county, that's what we shoot for every time, but if they don't step forward, then obviously we have to go with what we have. So a brief overview of how that works. And on the California reverse site visits, we call them, what that is, is basically where we take a team to meet with dozens, usually at least 15 to 25 companies, that have made it very clear that they are going to expand or relocate, and even more so, will take it further, a lot of times to where the criteria requires them to actually stipulate that they are interested in Nevada specifically. With that the case, we want to go down there, take these meetings as quickly as possible, so we can move them forward as quickly as possible. To do that, again, we'll form a team. This team's going to be a lot smaller, but it's going to be an experienced team. So normally with these teams, we like people who are very experienced with dealing with CEOs and decision-makers of mid to small-scale companies. So that's how that would work, and then we go out and we meet with them face-to-face, find out what the, what the project looks like. Of course, we sell our counties to them at that meeting right off the bat, and then we have a better idea coming back of where we want to direct them and where we need to place them that matches their criteria and their requirements.
Danny, I know since Tesla's moved here, there's been, obviously, a lot of firms coming here, just on their own, because of that ripple effect. I mean, it's been in the news, it's actually in the Reno Gazette again this morning, and it's been there almost daily, on a daily basis, per se. Real estate is selling out there in that area really, really quick, they're breaking ground, they're going to be pouring concrete soon. Originally, when the NNDAs came here, I did not vote in favor of the expansion of funding now. Reading through the material that's been presented and doing a little follow-through, I'm still a little bit hesitant as to the recruitment aspects. If you can bring anybody here, with such focus on Nevada, I don't know who you're going to bring here that's not already said, hey, we got to go. So I don't know if it's necessarily needed. I would look at if we have granted this money already, as the board already approved, and we're going to get quarterly reports from you. So could we anticipate hearing how many people you contacted, how many people are thinking of moving here? Is this information that will be given to the board, or is that something that you have to keep quiet about? And not only how many firms, but who those firms are? Is this information that you will give us in that report? Are we limited to the knowledge that we will gain what you're doing?
Fair question. In the reporting, which we will also talk about in the metrics here when we get to that, but yes, we will stipulate how many companies have visited Carson City during that quarter. Each quarter, we're going to report. We will tell you what type of companies these are, the size of the companies, maybe a brief description of, you know, are they a one to three? You know, are they coming regardless, you know, we got them? Are we going to have to work them for the next six months? That kind of thing. There'll be basic information. For the most part, the one to three information will be an oral presentation every quarter, based off of the information you see on the quarterly written reports. As far as telling you who these companies are, that's up to the companies. If they're okay with us, and we could tell them going in, hey, we have this, you know, this additional funding through Carson City, they would really love to have this information, and if they say, hey, no problem, you know, we're okay with that, we are. Very seldom will that happen, you know, I'm sure you've delved into the world of economic development in this region enough to understand that that's definitely something that very seldom happens. Companies are very close vested with this type of information, don't want their competitors to know, their employees to know. So there's a lot of reasons why they will, but we must go adhere to their requests, to their desires, you know, just is not to go public, and if it does, we're out of here. So we have to be very cautious with that. On the other question that you had a concern was, do we need to go after these companies? Is there a lot of time that needs to be spent on this? The answer is obviously yes, because I don't know what all you have heard, but there are very few companies that have committed verbally or otherwise. Calls are dime a dozen, we get calls every day, 10 a day sometimes. They really don't mean anything until you actually face-to-face with these companies. You have to sit down with them, you have to talk to them, you have to do a little research, you have to figure them out. Are they a waste of our time? Are they a good fit? Are they not a good fit? And so on and so forth. So the only way to do that is to get in front of them. If they offer the opportunity for us to drive over there, sit down with their executive team, and take two hours of their time and tour their facility, good sign they're serious. If they don't, we'll put them on plan, on list B. So the difference of what we're talking about is Tesla's going into Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, Story County. Our job is not to put people in Story County. The automatic is Story County, okay? The automatic is not Carson City, Lyon County, Douglas County, and Churchill. We have to make sure that the people we talk to, not only know that's a viable opportunity, but get them there. So that's the big difference. So yes, we do need to get there, we need to go out and recruit.
You work with other communities as well, so I mean, if you recruit these individual companies, they could come to Carson, Douglas, or other areas as well, because you get the financing from those communities as well. So I understand that. Are you, have you, or will you be working with the Airport Authority here in town? Because I know we're, I'm on that board, there's a big push to get manufacturing there. Is that something that you're looking into and you've connected with them?
Yes, you know, not me personally, I have a focus in other areas, which is attached to what you're talking about. Other staff members are in communication and have been for years, and as things progress there, and now, you know, lately this has come up to where, yeah, there's going to be a push, of course, we're going to be involved with that. The idea then is obviously then to communicate back to me, and make sure that everything I do outward involves that need, okay? So if we're going to go out and we're going to hit an aerospace and defense manufacturer, whatever the case may be, if it's a good fit for that area, then I need to know that information. So obviously, being involved from the get-go is important to us.
And are you currently, I know you're in the process of working with the, our manufacturer here in Carson City to expand their business and keep them here locally, and that is very important to me, and I'd like to see that be successful. And that's something else you'll be reporting to us on a quarterly basis as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
On the first go-around with Tesla, Danny, what kind of firms are you looking at?
I think on the budget, they were $12,000 per visit. The consultant fees, marketing campaign, electronic campaign, everything that we put together for those, including the actual setting up of the meetings, is around $10,000. That isn't the budget laid out that we presented.
I got you, but what type of industries are you looking at?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're looking for, in this case, because we're moving it up, now, the concept is this, is we, going back to Mr. Schirck's concern there, and rightfully so, is the retention and expansion of existing businesses. For us to do that, we have to get in front of these manufacturers in Carson City. We're very close to getting those, launch, that portion of the plan launched in front of them. And the idea was to get the information from these manufacturers, what do you need? You know, what type of companies would enhance your probability for expansion, or, you know, additional sales, or what that might be? Also, you know, how can we expand your market? How can we, you know, increase your sales, and so on and so forth? The idea for some of these trips, in fact, all but this first one, will be around that. In other words, what they tell us tells me what I need to go out and I need, what type of industry, what kind of companies I need to go after. The types that maybe in their supply chains, that offer certain materials or something like that, they're now getting, you know, on the East Coast, wherever it might be, it's going to cost them a third if we bring this particular company in, and so on and so forth. So all but this first one will be definitely focused on the needs of the existing manufacturers. This one, however, will be more on the hype of the, you know, the Tesla coming to town, so to speak. We need to make sure we get to them quick enough to avert them from, you know, Tahoe Reno Industrial Center and get them in our counties. It's close enough, USA Parkway's coming through shortly, so we have an open corridor here. So it's our job to get them here.
Okay, I think I got a better handle. All right, public comment? Yeah?
Mayor Bob, supervisors?
Morning.
Aaron West, for the record, on behalf of Bond and Builders Alliance, just wanted to come-
Good to see you again, Aaron.
Thank you. Good time in Vegas.
It was, and I think it was well-received.
Very well. Just wanted to come and lend our support on behalf of our 650-member companies. I think we are, certainly this area is at a crossroads, and we have an amazing opportunity to, for expansion over the next few years, and especially with the defeat of question three. We really look forward to advancing this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron, and thanks for your help on, Bond's help on putting together our proposal, our stuff down in Vegas. Good, okay. Anybody else? Board? Motion's in order, go.
I move to accept an amended retention and expansion economic development plan for Carson City as presented by the Northern Nevada Development Authority.
On the motion, discussion, Jim.
I just want to clarify why I'm going to vote in favor of this. I believe that Tesla coming here and that effect can have a significant impact on our community, not only in Nevada, but in our community. And relying on NNDAs to go out, recruit, and bring those manufacturing here, I think at this stage, after that Tesla moving here, I think it is appropriate that we do this. I just hope that it's beneficial in the long run. I look forward to the quarterly reports that would keep us in touch, and I just wanted to clarify why I voted no against it, and why I'm voting yes today, is because of Tesla moving here, and I think you can have a significant recruitment effort with that manufacturing coming here.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much, Danny.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while Danny is still here, for the record, it wasn't addressed in the original resolution, what I would like to do is to have NNDAs invoice us on a quarterly basis for payment of the approved budget as we go forth over the next two years.
Any problem with that? Shouldn't be.
Well, being a nonprofit and a very strict budget, would it be okay to entertain the idea of maybe bi-quarterly invoicing?
Bi-quarterly, sure.
Because of these type of trips, they're pretty expensive and they're out of pocket, so.
Yeah, we're, we just want more frequency, it's okay, I think. So that would be every six months? Is that what you mean?
Every six weeks.
Oh, every six weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Sure, we could do it monthly if it's better.
We'll do it monthly, I don't care.
It's up to you, it's up to you. Just trying to make it easier.
Whatever you approve.
All right, you guys work that out. Thanks, all right.
Thank you.
All right, let's now take up, where are we, on the meeting date? We'll take up this item 18B. Anybody have any objection to setting the change in the first regularly scheduled board of supervisors meeting in January, on Monday, January 5th, to begin at 1:30 PM, because we're going to be swearing in at 11 on that day? Anybody objections? Not, and motions in order. Brad, Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to set the meeting date for the first regularly scheduled board of supervisors meeting in January 2015, on Monday, January 5th, 2015, beginning at 1:30 PM.
Motion, second on the motion, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. See everybody at 11 AM on the 5th, and again at 1:30. Okay, so we will now take up item 18C. This is a potential consideration, the nomination of Paul Eschwein to the TRPA. Shelley, why don't you come up and tell us what's going on here, and then we'll see if there's.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, I'm Shelley Aldine, and I'm currently serving as your appointed representative to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. As you may know, I know it was reported in your packet that a longtime member of the APC, originally appointed, I believe, or at least nominated by my predecessor on the board, has elected, his name is Bob Jepson, has elected to retire for a variety of reasons. And first of all, I want to publicly thank him for his service. I think he's been an asset certainly to the APC over the years. So it was kind of my task to determine who might be a suitable replacement. As many of you know, I worked with Paul Eschwein as a member of RTC. I found him to be very knowledgeable and dedicated. I did actually consult with him before I suggested that he be nominated for this position, and he apologizes for not being here this morning, but unfortunately, he had an unavoidable conflict. I did confirm, and I want to apologize too, for not keeping Lee Plemmel in the loop, but I conferred with him just earlier to make sure that he was comfortable with Paul's nomination, and he is. Obviously, they're both planners. One of the things I wanted to note is that, in my opinion, the APC as an advisory body to the TRPA governing board has been underutilized over the years, and in recognition of that, the charter for the APC was recently amended to broaden the scope of their oversight as an advisory body. Typically, the APC is involved, for example, when we have proposed code amendments, they review environmental documents in connection with projects that are brought forth to the TRPA for review and approval. So under the chairmanship of Steve Tashara, who's been a very able chairman of the APC, and an operating charter amendment was brought forward, and the APC will now produce advisory recommendations grounded, obviously, in sound science and technical principles that integrate environmental, economic, and social planning considerations as needed, and offer solutions that have broad stakeholder support based on engaging a participatory and collaborative public process. And that kind of defines, in my mind, TRPA's new mantra. You know, we have as a board decided that all of our decisions need to be grounded in sound science, not on wishful thinking or political agendas. So the Advisory Planning Commission's charter now reflects similar commitment. As you probably know, the Advisory Planning Commission, this is probably more information than you want, was actually created by the Bay State Compact, and as I say, the Advisory Planning Commission is a valuable asset to the TRPA. The reason I thought that Paul would be a suitable addition is, even though he is technically a lay member, he does have a planning background, and I think that will be very complimentary to the expertise that Lee Plemmel offers as the chief planning official for Carson City. The chief planning officials, under the terms of the compact, are required to serve on the APC. The lay members are more discretionary, but we are attempting to find people who have more technical expertise and not merely a passing interest in what's occurring at the lake and the decisions that are being made. So the way this works is that the board nominates someone, and I hope that that- So the way this works is that the board nominates someone, and I hope that that person will be Paul Eschwein. At our meeting later this month, the Governing Board will basically take that nomination and make a decision by, I'm assuming, by appointing the nominated nominee, in this case, Paul Eschwein, to the APC. He will be serving for two terms, and that is in compliance with the provisions of the Bay State Compact.
Okay. Other comment? Anybody? Motion's in order.
I'll make it. I believe establishing boards of expertise are very important, so thank you, Shelley, for the nomination. And I move to submit the nomination of Paul Eschwein to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency for appointment to serve as Carson City's lay member of the Advisory Planning Commission.
Motion, a bunch of seconds. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Go forth and make decisions on sound science.
I will do my very best, and I want to congratulate Karen on her reelection, and I also want to congratulate John. That's exactly right. In my estimation, you're both winners. So anyway, and I want to congratulate Lori Bagwell, who's obviously in the audience. I'm sure she'll do a good job, but John, you'll be missed. It was a pleasure working with you.
Shelley, I want to thank you for doing what you're doing. You put in a lot of hours and a lot of expertise, and you've taken a major headache of Carson City and made it much better than it was. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Take care. Bye-bye.
We have a Bueller Lake because of you. That's good. All right. We're now on item 19. Before we take a break, any non-action items, future agenda items, status review, anything we need to talk about? Go. Then I'll get Alan.
I had my annual clock and carillon meeting, which Shelley handed over to me when she left office. And I just want to let you know that the "Don't Fence Me In," which has been the song that, you know, is forwarding Nevada that you've seen on the airways, they are, the carillon committee is actively searching for a chip so that that can be played. And if the city wants anything else played, please let me know so I can, they can look for that as well. Apparently, if you get a country chip and you can include as many songs as possible, it costs less. And Nick, I also wanted to extend an invitation to you for a tour of that. All right?
Okay. Just wanted to remind everybody that NNDAs Annual Pioneer Awards Dinner is tonight, where NNDAs will recognize not only a Business of the Year from each county in their jurisdiction, but there are also many other awards to recognize innovation, job creation, and other categories. So if anybody wants to go to that, I'm drawing a blank on where it is, but you can go to the NNDAs website and you can, at the nugget, at the nugget. So that will be tonight, I believe, at 6 o'clock.
Shortly after Pete Livermore died, Supervisor Bonkowski suggested that we name the Edmund Sports Complex after Pete. I had that put on the Parks and Rec Agenda. It was heard last night with a lot of community support. It was approved by the Parks and Rec Commission, so it will be coming here to rename the Edmund Sports Complex, the Pete Livermore Sports Complex.
NNDAs starts at 5 o'clock tonight, since I just bought the ticket yesterday, and they are honoring our mayor as well tonight. So he does get some recognition there. Also, we have Marv Texera, the Pavilion Reader Board Conversion on Highway 50, which is very nice. On the, somebody at the podium spoke about the ordinances and the businesses coming here from out of state. I don't know if those ordinance will be coming back to the board, but that's something we should be looking at, is giving these medical marijuana cultivations and dispensaries to our local businesses, not out of the state businesses. Something to consider. I would like to thank Nick for his weekly update that he provides to the board members. I think this is the most informative information I have received on a continually basis, and I greatly appreciate being kept in the loop on so many different things that are occurring. So I do appreciate it. Thank you. I do want to mention, if you may, if you feel comfortable, Nick, I just want to touch base on the security fences at the justice court. Could you give us an update on that? Is this the proper time to do that? Or is that something at a later date?
Yeah, that was the juvenile court security update. That was based off a request from the juvenile court master. Concern is, a lot of the, a lot of the court cases are very emotional, and she requested that the city look at providing a secure parking area. We've worked through both the plan as well as the cost for that plan. I've attempted to minimize to the maximum extent possible what it will cost. The courts are going to contribute about $50,000 to that project. So I think it, I think it's something that is needed. It's something that we do have in place currently at the District Court Building, and I think it's something that is going to benefit long-term in providing not only secure parking, but a better sense of security for the folks who work there.
Thank you. And my, and my last question is, I know I talked to you yesterday about this, is about the email that a board member would send out to staff, that we'd get their responses, and it was submitted as late material, which I don't have an objection to. I just want to, if you can clarify how this will be monitored, what emails, questions will be submitted as late material? Are all of them, or, you know, is it going to be arbitrarily? And what about conversations you have on one-on-one with the board supervisors where they ask a great question, you give an answer? Would that be submitted as late material? Or a phone call or other similar actions like that? How is all this going to tie in? Thank you.
Well, I've attempted to make a judgment call as we, when we publish the agenda and all the supporting materials, obviously, we, staff answers numerous questions from all the board members from the period that the material's published until the board meeting. Generally, if it's a written document, something like a contract, and we make what would be considered grammatical or non-substantial changes to the document, I'll make those changes. I won't submit the new document as late material as it didn't have any substantial change to the document. If we do make a substantial change, then I will submit that as late material, so not only all the board members have it, but the public has it as well. In this case, the question, I believe we're talking about item 13 Alpha, which was the Centennial Park enhancements, the ADA enhancements. For that, for that particular question, it wasn't that it was a significant question, but staff provided a map, and I thought that was significant. I thought it was something that the other board members would probably want to see as well as the public might want to see, that map. That's why that one was submitted as late material. All the other comments and questions that take place in the days leading up to the actual board meeting, again, I think if we ever trip the, this is now a significant change that we've made or a significant addition, if a board member asks for, you know, some type of clarifying material, then I'll submit that as well as late material. I hope that answered your question.
Well, it did somewhat, but there was two items submitted as late material from two board members who asked a question, question, agenda item 13A and 18, where questions were asked and answers were given from staff, and they were submitted as late material. So with this, and I don't have a problem with it, I just want to know, is this going to be a continuing, ongoing thing where questions are asked by board members, answered from staff, and they'll become late material? Or is it going to be arbitrarily done? And how is this going to be done if it is? Not just the map. There was questions and answers.
Well, again, I'd have to pull up the other one. I think I've addressed how I, you know, the judgment process I make in submitting items as late material.
Okay. We'll go. Yeah, comment, we'll do it then.
There have been instances where I have sent questions in, and when I got the answers back, I requested from you to send it out as late material because I felt that all the board members could use that information to make a decision prior to the board meeting. So that might be an additional level of clarification. It's just that there will be instances where a board member may ask a question, get an answer, and that answer may be determined between both of us or by one or the other to be significant enough to be sent out as late material.
I think that's a good point as well.
Well, I guess at the end of the day, you know, what we want to make sure is that all the board members have sufficient material for them, hopefully in advance of the meeting but during the meeting, to make a reasoned, reasoned decision. So however that works out, that's my view, that's your judgment, Nick, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me just say, I want to compliment Joel Dunn and the Visitors Bureau. Joel and I went to Las Vegas the day before Nevada Day, last, last week, and we attended the, with the governor and lieutenant governor, we attended the Sesquicentennial kickoff at the Springs Preserve in Las Vegas. And if you haven't been to the Springs Preserve in Las Vegas, you really ought to see what 186-acre cultural park can be. I mean, it's way out of our league, but it is, it is really rather spectacular in terms of museums, gardens, streetscapes, the whole thing. And we got public recognition as Carson City being there. We were the only other community that was there, and Joel and I were recognized for taking the effort to come down and help celebrate our state Sesquicentennial birthday in Las Vegas. And then the next morning, we also participated, the Visitors Bureau and the bond, and Bill Miles, I think, and others helped build a float that we put in the Las Vegas parade. We were right next to the, to the front of the parade, again, with the governor, lieutenant governor, and Senator Heller. I think Congressman Amity was down there too, but it was an attempt to say to the rest of the state, you know, this is our birthday, we are all part of this state. And I think it was very, it was, from what I heard on the street, and afterwards, it was very well received. And I know that when those members come up here during the next legislative session, they will remember that Carson City, and, you know, we speak often about this north-south divide. This is a little attempt to try and say, you know what, we got to get over this jurisdictional geographic stuff and work for the benefit of our entire state. And so that's kind of what it was, was tried to do, was, you know, show our face down there, they show their face up here, so let's see where it goes. But I want to thank the Visitors Bureau for, and Joel, for putting together all that. And Aaron was here earlier, did a nice job. So, anything else? If there's nothing else, then we're going to be in recess until, let me make sure I got it right, 2 o'clock? We'll be in recess at 2 o'clock, and we'll take up the downtown street design.